This conference will now be recorded.
We're going to call to order the moderator's slide board at 6:02 PM on April 9th. We have all three members present here in town hall. We're going to move the agenda around a little bit because Courtney Morehouse from BRPC is joining us. Thank you. Thank you for taking some time to be here, Courtney.
Who's taking, who's writing minutes for this week?
I can do it. Courtney, so we got, we got some information about the MVP grant. And I guess the decision in front of us is, do we want to proceed applying this year? And if we do, are we willing to commit to the funding and from what sources? Or do we want to delay the application until next year or into the future?
Oh, I'm here.
We can't hear you.
I can't hear you. You don't appear muted, but still we can't hear you.
Oh, it shouldn't even be that.
Yes.
We're just looking to see if the.
Oh, we can hear you now.
No, no.
Nope.
She's moving now.
Not anymore.
At least I could hear him. I know. She's trying to figure out why. Can you hear us, Courtney? Not. Okay, she can hear us.
Dennis, can you try speaking, please?
Yes, one, two, three, four.
Okay, yeah, we can hear, we can hear you, Dennis.
Do you want to sign off and try signing back on, Courtney? You are not muted from our side. Hmm. These work so well when it works. It's just so frustrating when it doesn't work. Is she calling?
Well, she's probably going to call in there and mute herself.
All right, can you hear me?
We can. Yeah, great.
Uh, we could.
Now.
Now we can't. What the heck?
We can't hear you. She was just on. It just said she wasn't muted.
Oh, wait.
You're muted.
Unmute yourself, unmute yourself, Courtney, and we'll see if we can. We heard you for a moment and then you muted yourself and you went away. Try now.
Okay.
That works.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry about the technical difficulty.
Oh, no, it's okay.
So, so we got a summary of pros and cons about moving forward with MVP this year versus delaying it a year. My, I guess I could just start off by saying, you know, it is going to cost a little bit more than we had thought a few months ago. So we're up to, what, 3.8? 3.82. And we can split some of the costs over two years, but we would have to, even though there would be potentially options, Dennis, that you've mentioned, for maybe getting the town match waived. Those are not really a shoe-in, and so we would need to be planned to pay about upwards of $800,000, as I understand it.
Yep.
Yeah, right now, the max that you can be awarded is 3 million. So anything in excess of that is, I mean, is essentially max because on top of the 3 million.
Does anyone have questions?
If they do change the program so that it goes up by the 100 million, the amount available per applicant would likely go up to 4 million from 3, is that correct?
We don't know what will happen if they decide to increase the environmental bond. There's a possibility they don't increase the per town at all, but you're not in a worse position than you're currently in if that happens. It's just that I sort of added that as something to consider. We don't know what will happen with the program, but we know what the, we know what they're now and we know what they're trying for. How that's going to affect the program is still up in the air.
What's the, I know this was from a bazillion years ago, but I feel like it's important to ask again. Right now, that culvert is functioning fine. It hasn't aged out. It's not showing significant wear. We're not in any immediate peril from the, even the insane rains we've already had. What are, you know, the question, I guess ultimately that I got from a couple of people in the last couple of weeks is, why are we doing this? Like, how likely is it that we are going to have a catastrophic flood? How do I answer that question? Give me the reminder, like, soundbite.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little hard to then say, you know, why, if we haven't had it yet, should we do this in the future, right? At some point, the models tell us, climate change tells us that this is going to result in bigger and bigger storms. You're right that the culvert's not in bad shape and you're not experiencing it yet. So there's no immediate threat of this needing to be done. And I can understand people's perspective that, you know, why are we doing this if it hasn't failed? I think the reality that we're seeing, at least from the climate change modeling, is that all signs point that eventually it will. So this could be a long-term planning effort by the town. In terms of why the town chose this project in particular, I'm not, I'm not necessarily privy to that. It might be a good question for Dennis or someone else who has like further history with the town since we sort of came in going, yeah, like, these are sort of main issues that we think about. These are sort of the main infrastructure pieces that we look at when we think about increased precipitation. And then we sort of leave it up to the towns to point us in the right direction and support them in whatever way we can.
Dennis, do you want to comment on that one?
Sure. During the, during the initial stages, going back to 2016, when we started this journey through MVP, there was a process of public input and public input. And at that time, the culvert was ready for the projects that should be done. I believe it was one of the five projects. And from the history, when there were forms of significance, there were floods flooding some of the property. The, I don't recall, actually, you know, the post office box of the, but the gray house just the basement on the east side. And that house, white house, just a little bit north of town center on Cockapod. There was flooding in those, those properties. And I believe some, you know, not minor, but of course, in the middle of town center. So I think for those reasons, that was chosen as one of the areas.
Okay.
And I think where I see it, Susan, is because of, you know, the climate change, we all have seen it. This is, it would be a great project to tackle, to know that we're setting up future generations. But maybe it's part of also the same reason that it's not urgent. You know, I would say that based on our meeting, our phone call last week and all the information that's been available, I'm leaning towards probably delaying the application because the project isn't urgent and there's some funding up in the air. It would be nice to just keep the momentum going. This is a project that a lot of effort has gone into and we've made it really far. But given just everything going on with the town financials this year and kind of a little bit of lack of clarity on if, you know, or kind of this question mark of will the, the grant program change? It seems hard to justify just trudging forward without kind of a clear plan for that 800-plus thousand dollars. And like you said, Courtney, in your summary, once we have final, final permitting, we'll know if there are even additional costs beyond that, right? Because technically, we don't have 100% permitting yet.
Exactly, yeah. I mean, there's, once it goes through MDT review, sometimes they ask for, you know, structural changes or can you do this type of design versus this type of design? It's kind of up to the discretion of DOT to dictate what they want the final design to be. Or at least it's a conversation between DOT and the engineer. And so, you know, you'll have those permits in hand, but you don't fully know what changes DOT is going to ask for until those permits are completely done. It might be that they are, you know, they ask for no changes. Certainly, we're a lot further in our plans than most, most design plans are when they go to DOT.
Justin, when you say delay, how much time are you talking?
Well, I believe, is MVP cycle year annually each spring?
Yep, every year in the spring.
So, I mean, what I would foresee is we take a year, we get the final permitting.
It's a 24, 25?
Yeah, we chew on how do we tackle this financial burden? Because it just, it seems that's too large of a number to, I think, finance with debt when we're going to the town for a million-dollar fire truck the same year. And next year, I think it's even too large of a number still because, again, we have that million dollars looming over our heads. So I think it's a, it's going to have to be a creative solution, maybe pull some from stabilization, some from free cash.
Some from chapter 90.
Some from chapter 90. And because we've kind of already fleshed out our whole budget process this year, we don't have really much stabilization, free cash available. And we're still kind of fleshing out what the, what exactly the chapter 90 money, where we're at and what the plan is for it. Because we also don't want to deplete it and underserve our roads. So it's kind of a tough thing because we've been going at it since 2017 and kind of without ever really taking a break and always keeping, you know, the public outreach going on and, you know, the design meetings we had with the slide board. And it's been really impressive along the way. But on the other, and then we also don't know what other, you know, grants we might be able to pair with it or if MVP changes at all. It just seems like we don't, we're not prepared to come up with 800-plus thousand dollars right now. And if we were to put an application on the, on the basis that hopefully we would get some or part, some or all of that waived, that wouldn't really be fair because we just, I couldn't really see the town coming up with 800,000 to do a non-emergency repair.
No, but those towns are tired of emergency repairs.
So, yeah, it's, it's tough. I mean, I know how much work has gone into it over the years and I don't think in any way we're pulling the plug on it. We're just, just taking, taking here. And I would foresee ideally a phase three application next spring. Yeah, Dennis?
I had a brief conversation with the Office of the Climate Area Sponsor. The, it's called Senate Bill, State Senate Bill 599. And the young lady pointed out that this bill has been put before the legislature for several years, but it's gotten to the point where it's already passed through finance and it's going to ways and means. When the bill goes to ways and means, that's a good sign. We don't know for sure what the outcome will be, but that particular million dollars a year, this legislation seems to have a better chance of passing, although not guaranteed than it has over the past several years.
And so if that bill passes, would that be additional funding during this cycle, Dennis? Or would it be for next cycle?
Yeah. I think Courtney would agree. Probably not, Courtney.
Yeah, I think it's probably going to be next cycle at the soonest.
So, I mean, I think in some ways.
I know that there are, sorry, I was just going to say, I know that there are federal funds out there for infrastructure writ large and some of it is set aside for rural communities. It might be worth having a conversation with the Federal Funds Office at the state level to see, to basically say, you know, this is the dilemma we're in. We don't have the resources on our own to cover this. We are planning on going for MVP funds in next fiscal year, but we need matching federal funds to make this happen. Otherwise, we really can't take on that much match. You know, we can match X amount through our own sources, but we can't match this amount. Like, come up with some, what's the number that the town is comfortable with putting cash match boards? And then have that conversation with the state and really have that federal funds office work for you, you know, identifying the different grants that are out there and that are possible.
In some ways, this is kind of an attractive project because it is that we're very close to 100% permitting, right? And it's about climate change and resilience. And hopefully that is compelling for funding.
Yeah, I mean, there's very few projects that get this far with this amount of funding and gets just like shoveled in the ground, ready to go. And those are the types of projects that I think most funders want to go for. They want to see a change. A lot of funders don't want to fund planning or engineering. They really want to, you know, especially at the federal level, they want to, they want to fund construction. So I'm not sure what those are, but I know that that's why the state created the federal funds office, was to help town with capacity building around finding those grants.
Well, there is, there is one funding source that's been around for a while. It's been tweaked a little bit, but I believe it's called BRIC, which is Building Resiliency in Communities, the acronym. Close enough, but that might be a possibility, as Courtney has suggested.
So I think what I'm, what I'm seeing here is a general consensus that we're going to not apply for MVP Phase 3 this year. We'll tentatively plan on applying next spring, 2025. And in the meanwhile, look at what, what funding sources we have to cover the match. Does that sound good to everybody?
It sounds like that's what you're leaning towards, yeah. I mean, not that I'm going to speak for the rest of the select court. I think that's your obvious decision, but that's what I'm hearing from you.
I'm comfortable.
Susan?
I agree.
Okay. Well, that's it, that's, that's what, that's where we're at. And thank you both, Courtney and Dennis, for all of the many, many hours of work that you put into the project. And I'm really, you know, every time we see the design, it's really impressive where we're at. And hopefully, you know, we take the year and get a plan together and see it through.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I said, yeah, I said, yeah, before you even asked, yes. I was like, wait, I just said that.
Okay, we'll move, we'll move on with the agenda. And the next item of business is IT service agreement. How long ago did we interview IT's service?
I would, that's been going on.
A year?
A while.
Dennis, or not Dennis, Roger, I have a couple of questions. You got the service, but where does office windows upgrades and consistent and antivirus? I mean, he says here that you'll do remote bar, so monitoring.
Insulation of new software, but it's not very specific.
Yeah, so we'll end up putting that in, in the first, first month or so. Okay. Yeah, I have conversations with him. There are some, there are some costs there, you know, involved in that. It's not a lot. It's all part of starting up. The whole office, in looking at sort of the scheduling out of how the projects might work with here is, you know, first getting the service agreement signed, having them come in, have some conversations about the security levels and increasing security. And then start, you know, then look at some of our hardware and, you know, another month or so, order some hardware.
Okay.
Which is more on the switches and servers and things, switches and, and firewalls, things like that. And then probably the last thing we would probably do or into next year would be actually migrating to full Office 365. Because we have such a mixed match of things here. And, you know, we've done a good job of kind of keeping things afloat, but it's still.
Well, that's my general impression of it.
Yeah.
Hodgepodge, I would say.
Yeah, so it's, it's, I really need someone to come and sit down and kind of look at what.
Each one.
Look at how each, how each, you know, each computer user is set and how we're going to transition that in person to an Office 365. And still sort of looking at that, we really have kind of two models. And I think the model that I'm looking at is more of everything sort of online, moving away from the hardware locally. But we're still going to have to keep it here for a while because of a couple of departments, just for a while until we can transition away from that. Also, figure out what the process is. But that's kind of how I was looking at the whole, moving forward.
Just checking in here, as I read this, the 2,800 is for the year?
Yep.
Yeah. But there are a number of services that are going to be outside of the base service agreement.
Right, that's what it sounds like. Plus, it sounds like some of the software is going to be outside of that.
Well, we will have to purchase software, so they're not, so if we have to purchase like additional or change our licensing for Office 365,
That would be part of that.
That would not be part of that, yeah.
But what, and so the 28K we have in the budget would be the 2,800 plus all of that.
Yeah.
And whatever hardware.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, but if I understand correctly, part of that 2,800 is one time, get us up to speed.
Yes.
And then that number may drop to 30%, 50%?
Well, the 2,800 is always the 2,800. That's the annual service.
No, sorry, the 28,000.
The 28,000, yes.
Thank you.
So 28,000. That will drop.
Yes, it could significantly drop, say like down to 20,000. Yeah. Initially, I think that, I think what I've kind of figured out with the costs is that, you know, as we get out of about three years, there's really kind of not much of a cost difference between, I think, things local and the cloud. I think we have a better opportunity with things in the cloud, but there, it'll be significantly lower than 28,000. And 20,000 in another year and then looking at it again and seeing how we're doing. My concern is actually hardware and that we have a lot of like laptops, we have laptops.
That laptop is a piece of junk.
I know.
And so. I was just about to say, and does that include rotating through, replacing the freaking, this is aging out hardware?
They go to.
Yes.
They go to the graveyard, yeah.
By rotating, I mean, we may not be able to replace them all tomorrow, but we need to go through some, so that they gradually get.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to figure out is as we get into that $28,000 budget, is that as we sort of look at it, the next year, maybe it can roll down if we have enough money to sort of rotate people, you know, rotate the change of hardware. But it's, you know, since COVID, laptops and desktops have kind of switched in their cost. It used to be, laptops used to be really expensive and desktops were cheap, and now it's kind of flopped around. Now desktops are a little more expensive, laptops are cheap. So I want to kind of look at all that hardware. I got hardware in the cabinet in here. I don't really know where it goes, so.
Or what conditions in?
Yeah, what condition. I think that, like I said, that 28,000 will work for this kind of year and longer until we get to a point where it's kind of real uncomfortable.
And you're comfortable with these response times?
Yes, I am. I mean, as long as they have, they have the phone call support, it's pretty standard, you know, for IT. And, you know, you can, you can make those response times quicker, but your costs are just going to go up. That's really what happens, you know, and actually, an hour on a phone call, it's probably, you know, I'd have to see how that goes. But if it's pretty, as far as I can tell.
It's about light speed compared to what we have.
Yeah. And from what I can tell, no one is coming in here and saying, I have all these problems. You know, the one time, luckily, my, my background experience helped out the assessor's office only because of the mistake I made. So I had, I had to fix it.
Would you buy the software through him? Is he going to be able to do the Windows licensing or?
Yeah, well, yeah, we would, the way they do it is they, you know, we buy through him, they're like, it's not like a reseller, it's kind of, they, they kind of.
They would get them, because the Microsoft has them in this, how your government.
Yeah, they have the G, the G license, the government licensing. So, yeah, we would, we would, they might help us. I would ask him to help us kind of figure out what's the best licensing to have cost-wise. And then we could purchase that ourselves to our own.
I thought it was a precaution, pretty common.
Yeah.
I did see that.
No coverage on any equipment over two years old.
I know.
Like, that would be everything.
That's why, that's why I have to sort of.
And in my house, too.
I just have to sort of look at some of the stuff. So, and, you know, some of the hardware that we have is, that's why I think.
Especially the network stuff, which is the security.
Yeah, that's why I think the 28,000 will be good for the first year, sort of, sort of look at that hardware and then kind of see things out. Because I do think, I think on desktops, laptops, we'll have to see, but I think we could probably get away with a five-year cycle on desktops. Laptops, I'm not so certain about. Servers are usually even faster than that. So that's why it's kind of like how we transition away from servers and how that's all going to look in the future and without being a huge gigantic, you know, scare fest with some of the, you know, with the employees. Because that always ends up, when people get worried that things aren't going to happen. And I mean, we do have a couple of pieces of software that, you know, for probably a year, we're going to have to keep it on the, on the server. So what does that look like?
Okay, a couple of changes before I assume we'll approve it. On page two, section 3.2, which is, says 3.1, but it's 3.2. So that's one change. It's just changing 3.2.
Yep.
I'm going to recommend a 21-day allow, allotment for the town to pay invoices.
Into the cycle?
And then 3.3, same thing.
You want to add 31 as well for that?
Yeah, so because, you know, we get invoices, it could be two weeks before they even get submitted.
Yeah.
So 21 is kind of getting close.
Usually it's the, like, most, most of the contracts that have come across our thing have been 30 days. So a couple of them have been 60 days, which I was like, wow.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll, I'll ask for 30.
Well, well, what we're going to do.
I have a problem.
Can I have your copy?
I mean, the worst I can say is not.
Do you have, does anyone have a clean copy?
Oh, I. Did I have a?
What we can just do is we can change it to 30, approve it, sign that.
Yeah.
If he wants to get a clean one, that's fine, too. If he wants to use the marked up one, that's good. And if he doesn't want to do 30, then we have that discussion, but I assume he'll be, he'll accept it.
Yeah, we'll use S for 30. I mean, you're right, it is sort of a standard 30 day.
That 30 is free comment. I don't think I have a copy at all. That's from last meeting. This is the last meeting.
I got Roger, I came up.
No, I didn't mind having that here. I have one right here.
This is on last meeting.
There you go.
There we go.
Okay, so.
I was looking it down.
3.2. And then 30. And then thirty.
And three point two and then three point three?
Yeah, sure. And then thirty.
I'm like, good work in my end profession now.
And. With those minor changes, I move that we approve the contract with network engineering and security. Is there a second?
I've seconded the motion.
Yeah. Is there any discussion or any questions? All right, I'm gonna call, oh, Susan?
Yes.
Uh, Frank?
Yes.
And Justin, yes. So, that will be approved. And what we can do is, there's only one signature for every, is if he doesn't like it, we can just come back to it next week, and I think he'll like it. And if he wants, I've already said what I'm about to say, so.
Funny when you realize how many times you've said that one thing.
Sometimes in here especially, you feel like you have to repeat it for the record.
Thank you. If there's a clean copy, yes, I can do. Uh, special event permits, there are two. I was gonna do a disclosure of the appearance of conflict of interest and say that I could still participate, but I didn't get around to it. So, that being said, there's a, I'm gonna declare that there's an appearance of a conflict of interest, because Gould Farm is my employer, and I'm not gonna participate in that one.
So, what's the special event? Do you wanna, I'll read it. Over fifty people.
I probably shouldn't.
This is, this is instead of Gould Farm, is asking that they're gonna have over fifty people parking and music.
I didn't print the third page. I just gave you the cover page, so you'd like me to read what it says?
Yeah.
So, um, the roadside ribbon cutting ceremony is proposed to take place at the new building property, and they're inviting members of the public, donors and farm friends to join. It'll be about forty five, the, the whole event should be over in forty five to sixty minutes. They plan to invite people to park on Gould Farm property near Diane Street. So, she had called and, um, I had suggested that she do this, just as a, as a convenience, you know, courtesy. And also to make, I let Brian know as well. So, I haven't received a twenty five dollar check yet, but that's what it is.
Do we, do we have to, just to, you have to sign it?
And this, and this is a point, there's actually no place to sign it on any forms. I, I looked at.
We don't know, we just usually, we don't actually sign them, right? I move that we approve the Gould Farm ribbon cutting. And all in favor, yes.
Okay, you can keep that. I have a clean copy. I have the original.
Okay, um, let's see, the next one is a wedding?
Yes, yep, the next one is a wedding. Um, it's a small wedding anniversary party. It has been delayed because of the pandemic. They plan to have some speeches, toasts and low background music, and it will be at the, um, it will be at the Monterey Community Center on, um, May eighteenth, from three to seven thirty P M.
Well, it's not gonna interfere with anyone's bedtime, so.
Nope, so they have everything, uh, plus the twenty five dollar check.
I will move that we approve it.
I second the motion.
All right, are, is there any discussion questions? Call, oh, Susan?
Yeah.
Frank?
Yes.
And Justin, yes.
Do you feel it is necessary to have this document changed so it is signed? Are you okay with just approving that?
I was just.
I don't even understand the document. I don't even know.
Not only the agenda.
I think maybe, maybe there might be a conversation on what the special permit is, or maybe there's a different form.
I think the issue is like sometimes if people have, if they're, if the event goes late, or the parking's gonna obstruct the road, or the music is gonna be problematic for the neighbors because they're having an outdoor band and it's planning to go two in the morning, or like, there's a bunch of situations where it could be an issue, and I think the idea is that they have to get a permit to avoid situations that create a problem.
Right, and it also, it also sort of forces them to, um, to deal with the alcohol situation, food situation, medicine. They do have food, they have to have the certificates.
I mean, can you imagine if somebody had a huge, like, party, like, in one of these houses that has very limited parking right on Route twenty three?
Yeah.
That could be really problematic.
No, there is.
Well, I was gonna say, you should let Brian know about that, because there's only so much parking on the, the community center.
Oh, I, I, yeah, I was gonna make a copy of these and, and put them in the box and all that sort of stuff, just.
And they, you might need to email them maybe, or jot them a note saying they need to think about parking. Um, if it's dry, the community center has higher events where people have parked down below the hill.
Yeah.
Um, but that does not work if it's, like, now.
Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll email, uh, the event is next month.
Yeah, it could be dry, it could be wet.
I'll, I'll email him with the notes, please, okay, and then, uh.
Okay, moving on, notary insurance renewal, the premium is one thousand one hundred and thirty four dollars.
What was it in the past?
I'm not certain, because to be honest, I think, I was talking actually to, uh, a new representative for insurance, or temporarily.
Maya.
For Maya through Cabot Risk, and it's like, there's a, there's a line item that says bonds and insurance
Yeah.
on our budget, and I think all that stuff must be in there. It just says a hundred and twenty five, or some of that, ninety something.
Yeah.
So, so I'm thinking all this stuff is sort of lumped, lumped.
Well, we, huge insurance policy, and that accounts for, I think, more than a hundred thousand dollars of that.
Yeah.
And then there's a few separate policies, like notary, the schoolhouse.
Yeah, um, he's, you know, he meant, he rattled off a bunch of them, property things. So, like, I, line nine four five in, in the budget um, is, uh, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for this year. It was budgeted at a hundred and twelve thousand last year. I have to go look and see how much has been used so far, uh, but I, that's the only thing, place I could figure where this came, where this is actually lumped into that. So I don't.
The only other place, I'm sure it comes from, or I'm not sure, but I think it's safe to assume that's where it comes from.
Yeah.
The only other place it could come from is like county administrator expenses.
Yeah.
Probably doesn't, you know.
I'll, I'll look, I'll look at it.
Is this the same coverage we have now?
Yes, yes.
It's just your renewal, yeah.
It's just for the.
Just your renewal, yeah.
I thought the coverage was something else, and no umbrella policy.
Well, the town, I, I guess maybe this is right, separate.
I'm not actually finding the schedule of the cost anywhere.
Well, if you go to nine, line nine four five, it's just one, one line.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, there's no, yeah, it's not.
Right, there's no breakout anywhere.
Does it come, does it come from another sheet?
No, it's just a number right on that sheet.
Yeah.
It, it's in other, but in other, it just shows up the same, bonds and insurance, so there's no, there's no reference.
I can go see if I can break it down.
It's just a number.
And actually, it does.
With a notation, yeah.
So when we sat down, this last two years, I've sat down with the insurance rep, and there's books of pol, of policies, and most of them, they're like, the umbrella is one million or to three million, like, one million per claim, five million total. And then there's umbrella on top of that, um.
It's so confusing.
Uh, yeah, it's confusing.
I can do that.
I don't know if this is just separate, if we still have this, maybe the same.
Well, I think it's just a policy, but what you're saying is more information of more to this power, more insurance company. This is ju, if you look at the bond and insurance, you know, that's only like one percent of the cost.
Next, maybe next time we have them here, they should now, we'll sit down with the whole board, um.
I think, well, it's one of those things, we need to document so we understand it, you know, so.
How the insurance company actually works, coverage actually.
Yeah, coverage works, because, you know, there's change on Slack board, but we have nowhere to go to suggest, you know, it's sort of you start at ground zero.
It would be good to have at least a breakout of what the coverage is, or, it's usually really complicated and like, even on those ones, it's a million things. But the other, while we're bringing up the insurance, one thing that got brought up today in the OSRP thing is the whole volunteer insurance thing again. And I, like, I'm continuing to say, it is crazy that the town cannot allow.
I, I did actually just get, just before the meeting started, I did have, I got an email, because I spoke with that same insurance person and asked them. And they sent me an, an email, because I, I was, I, I had reached out and asked a question, and they responded back to me. And I have an email, the response that says, it shouldn't be an issue as long as we have a waiver.
Okay.
And they're gonna send me a waiver, because it says Maya does not have any issues with volunteers being used. We do provide coverage for volunteers activity.
Well, that's a different answer than we've had in the past.
We just need, we just need the waiver.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
Yeah, it's really good.
So, so I asked the, for them, I don't need to be attached to here, but he said he was going to send me, um, a, uh, a, a waiver. You know, I thought it was an example.
Exactly, right.
Um, okay, that being said, are we ready to vote on the notary policy?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion to refine the insurance policy.
And I'll second.
All right, is there any other discussion? Call, vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so that's a, yeah, an approval there.
It looks like just one.
Yep.
So this is different, I guess, this is color on.
Steve Morrison, so, you would be elected, you're gonna be the new chair, right? I was like,
You told me you wanted it.
I told you I actually did not. I am the worst at running meetings. You do not want me to do that job.
My wife says you do a great job.
Oh, my God. She's the chair. I, I, I'm just the secretary. I like it that way. I make a good spock and a lousy curve. I am the science officer. That is my job.
Fire truck request?
What?
We have to vote on it, but we haven't voted on it.
What about it? I mean, I put it on the warrant.
Yeah, we've put it on the warrant, but I don't think we have formally voted.
Well, I see your point. So, some things that we want on the warrant, we'll vote and say we want to put them on the warrant. A lot of this, though, we haven't, we haven't voted. Now, one thing I was gonna do with the Slack board and finance committee, because we're gonna have everyone here tonight for the first time in twenty twenty four, is go through and any, we can go through, because right now it says that everyone supports everything.
So easy.
But we can say, you know, I put up a stick about transferring the audit money. So maybe I say, no, I don't support the audit money, you know? And then, if we realize, if we realize that the, you know, there's not a majority support for anything, we'll, we'll ditch it. But why don't we do that with the finance committee while we're going through? And then, you know, if it could be one to one, or two to one, or, and if it's all of a sudden, there's not majority support for something, it's off the warrant.
Um, are we just, are we talking warrant, or are we talking just fire truck right now?
Fire, eh, fire truck request.
Okay.
In anticipation of that, are there things you want to talk about?
On the fire?
Yeah.
No, I mean, I know as much as you've done, I've gone through, I did this back finding to write the story about it, so I, I mean, that, that's all the information I have.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, the fire.
So we're talking the million and fifty thousand?
The million fifty, I know, the, the fire chief did reach out to me and say that he thinks that what's now Article eleven, it's so helpful to have numbers in there. Shouldn't we, first of all, it's not volunteer ambulance thing, or, so that would definitely, the volunteer would have to come up. But he's suggesting we just say for ambulance services. He's concerned about the long term viability, and by long term, I mean this course of this year.
That's not a bad point. Let's do it. I'm not opposed to it.
So just for ambulance services. We have learned that being less specific is often better.
That's why we should just say to raise and appropriate five point two million, period.
If you want more, go look at the budget.
We'll get back to you on that.
No, it's, the transparency is good. It's, but it's tough, when all of a sudden you get hamstrung by nonsense.
Yeah, well, the hat, this is like the, you know, yeah, it keeps unhappening.
But, in our defense.
Yeah.
Part of the problem is there's a plan, and then we go off the plan. And by the way, I was looking over the three twelve minutes, and we signed loan documents. Do you remember that?
I listened to it on the video, because I wrote the notes.
Do you remember how we signed loan documents?
We did. It's on video.
I hope we don't have to redo that, because that is an ordeal.
Oh, my God, which loan?
It was for the medical rescue vehicle.
Medical rescue vehicle.
You didn't write my notes. I, I, I sent this on the morning.
I don't know if Sarah actually went and borrowed the money. But you know how much of an ordeal that is?
I don't.
Because it's a time sensitive thing, where they have to drop it off and sign it in time.
And there's no, and there's no early.
I don't know what that is.
If it's just handed them in.
I don't know.
They're gonna have to pay interest on money, even though it's sitting in an.
Not having, but I don't think.
I'm not sure.
They'll borrow it till it actually comes to an end.
The one, they write the check is when you're interested. Yeah, there's people, there's some people.
Except that when we sign them, and it says in your minutes that it comes to in October, and there was a rate set.
Yeah, you, you're the one that's, right?
But, but he's right, until we have a bill, we don't, they don't borrow the money.
You can't deny, because they're telling you to.
You never know when exactly it's gonna be.
Understood, so that, so then does it, is.
I've played that thing about ten times.
I hate doing this.
I have a bottle of wine.
Okay.
You gotta make sure.
So, we're not going through the warrant yet. When we go through the warrant, if anyone disagrees with anything, we're gonna mark it on the line. I just wrongfully put down all the, everyone supported it, and then I, that wasn't really fair of me. I was just doing it so to be in there, and I should have been on.
Fair enough. What are we up to on the?
The lease agreement, fire, not me, lease agreement.
I have no news, because, uh, Kevin was not coming back. He was supposed to be with Sean.
Were we back?
On the lease.
Fire code, no news, it's the end.
Oh, my goodness, aren't they chargers?
Oh, my God. Kind of like this.
Yeah.
What kind of?
HP?
Oh, yeah, that was true.
It's a little circle.
Oh, no, mine's.
That, that looks kinda right.
Yeah, but I didn't break it, because it's brand new, the battery.
Look, this one is charged live on.
No, that's too big of one. You know what? I don't really need it for anything, other than, I don't really need it for anything.
I had to charge in between use.
Do we, we're waiting out.
We did update on that.
So basically, all we have.
Do you want to do town administrator updates or minutes while we're waiting? Is Jeff here?
Yeah.
Jeff, Jeff's here.
We're not waiting for any, well, she got eight minutes.
Do we have town administrator updates?
Uh, the only updates I have, well, I'm still trying to find things, which is going a lot, I can't find the Z B A files for a meeting for tomorrow. Uh, uh, you saw that, you saw the, uh, information about the check or ninety seven.
Yeah, that was good.
That was really good, so, you know, we have a pretty decent, uh, amount in there. And, um, I did do some, uh, some background work on the insurance, how we were trying to figure out who everybody is, who has the insurance and all that. And I did, actually was able to log into the, online to get the latest bill, which, uh, there was a detail sheets in there that listed out all individuals, what, um, what types of, uh, insurance, basically individual, couple or family. And also, um, who the retirees were that were getting that as well. So, I have that broken down, and it's actually pretty good, because I, I, the, the dollars that we are planning for the budget are within, within what we've already looked at.
So it's correct, the correct size?
It's correct in that it covers what we have with a little bit of, with a little bit of a cushion.
The extra cushion.
Yeah.
Is that the single policy cushion?
Uh, it's a, it's a cushion.
So it's.
Is it a perm cushion, or is it a?
Well, you see, because it's kind of, it's kind of strange, because we have ten people right now that are on it. One will be leaving with a, one will be leaving who had a couple, one will be coming on, that's me. Melissa's leaving, I'm coming on with, that's a single. So there's, there's a, um, you know, there's a nine hundred dollar difference between a single and a couple times twelve, so there's a bit of cushion right there, the fact that that money's in there. And I think if we got too, and I think if we got too specific.
Well, one thing I told Rogers, you know, why make a cushion super, super specific when it could be someone changing in July or December? Or who knows when turnover will be?
And I went and looked at the first budget of the fiscal year, the fir, the first bill of the fiscal year. And I think at that point in time, there were only like eight people, or not, not nine people that were covered by insurance. And then a couple people dropped off, and then we ended up with three more adding, so it's a constant flux. So it's sort of hard to say, you know, oh, jeez, we should have a single. But I think if we have a single times, you know, the single, which is seven hundred and seventy seven dollars times twelve, you know, is.
So basically, what this has is, right, it has four, uh,
Yeah.
four single plans, one spouse, one cushion of a single plan.
Yeah, that's not really how it is in reality, but, but.
What, no, this is for this year, it's not how it is in reality?
In reality, there's four, in reality, there's four singles.
Right.
Four, uh, there's, there's four singles, four families and two couples.
Right, four thing, singles, four families and two couples?
Yeah, and then there's eight, then there's eight retirees.
But I believe they get paid from retiree health and life.
Yes.
Right, that's from a different thing.
Yep, but it gets kinda confusing, because most retirees spouses are getting paid out of retiree, and there's one retiree spouse on the.
Yeah, so I have to figure.
Regular health insurance?
Yeah. So it's a little, it's a little confusing, um, as to what is actually, but when the dollars work out at the end, it's, it matches, see this one forty-eight number there?
Yeah.
It's, the, the number that we have is, I think we're gonna talk about one fifty, or so, I figured the numbers were gonna put in there. Because we needed a cushion, there's no cushion here.
Yeah, there is, the, the one that's labeled cushion.
It's not really a cushion, because there's ten, if you count four, five, six, plus four.
No, four and four is eight, and one and one is two, that's ten, and eleven makes, is the cushion, so this is actually eleven. But they may not be the right ones.
Exactly.
Right, but what I'm saying is, if we just corrected to the right ones, we would have the right number.
Right, but I think to the point we were talking about with the, if, if you wanna put the cushion in there, yes, if you wanna throw that extra dollar value in for that, and yes, it would cover it, but I have, I did go look at my.
There's a very confusing thing to choose, because all retirees are listed on a separate policy.
The ones that are down here.
Except for one spouse.
Eight employees' spouse, except for that.
For one current employee's.
It's not.
It wasn't a current employee's spouse, it's a retiree's spouse.
Retiree's spouse.
So why is it up there?
I don't know.
Good question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's very clearly a retiree's.
And also, that would mean that the premium shouldn't be what that premium says it.
Well, yes.
Well, they're, they're also paying fifty percent, so it's confusing, so that's why I have to figure that out, that was my investigation, was trying to, my investigation was first to get, logged in, logged in.
How many people are, right, yeah.
I have one idea.
What's that?
The retirees and their spouses are over a certain age.
Yeah.
That retiree spouse hasn't hit that age, that's why they're on the normal policy.
She's only sixty-one.
Possible.
Oh, it's possible, right.
That, that does seem likely, which is why it makes a point of saying what their age is.
But then.
This one says sixty-one, so within twenty twenty-four, sixty-four is a legal obligation.
So is that a legal obligation? Or was it something that was worked out as a deal?
No, well, I don't.
It's probably, probably part of the retirement.
It could have been part of the retirement.
It's part of the retirement, because some pensions will give you a supplementary, or healthcare, or, including the qualifications for Medicare, six of five, that was like.
Yeah, yeah, it, it could very well.
That, that, that's what, you have, I would suggest you go back and look at the retirement policy, probably says in there what it is.
So that's, that's where I am with that, so I think, I have, I'm, um, I think I've got it pretty much down as to what we, we have, because I have to pay some bills. But, but yeah, it's, um, it's a little confusing when you start looking at it, and then trying to come up with a, come up with a number is tough, because tomorrow, somebody could decide to be a family.
Well, that's why we have the cushion, and the cushion is in case we get a new employee.
It's a waste.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, and we, we had, we originally had a family cushion, but then we were like, eh, don't want money.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna recommend too, that we go with the one forty-eight that's in the budget, and if between now and next week,
We have to change it.
we do a deep dive, we can figure out if we need to change it, but we, we, it's not gonna be helpful to dive too far into the weeds on this subject.
Right now, I agree with that.
The whole budget warrant looking highly.
I agree, well, the joint meeting hasn't started, traditional practice is not pegging it to one plan, but take an average of all the plans to use as a cushion, that's a different way to come at it. So take an average of the, the couple and same plan. Right, so you might do a little over, a little under, but you're not pegging it too much or too much.
Right, right, right. The, the problem in our situation, the problem in our situation is because we have so, such few employees on health insurance.
Of course, the average store.
Two employees going from single to family could shoot the insurance up twenty percent.
Correct, but traditionally, we've had one cushion, we pegged it to one thing, if you wanted to, so we'd get around the ton, with the general accepted principle, right, using the average.
And I also wouldn't put it out of the realm of possibility that halfway through the year, any given year, we need to make a reserve fund transfer request, and I wouldn't feel that bad, because this account is just so unpredictable.
Exactly, that's what the reserve fund said. And just what I'm saying, the insurance company should tell you, stage of their diligence, and why every, they're paying for everyone, so they should just be able to give you those answers.
Yeah, I have, I, I, yeah.
You don't have to go through your time or plan this and that.
I've, I've just got access to the account this morning, so.
All right, so, is it seven o'clock? It's not quite seven o'clock. Um, let's discuss how we wanna go through this, I think for the most part, I didn't grab your budget and you want.
It's JL Jeff? Oh, yeah, Jeff.
JL is Jeff.
I got it.
Kevin Loane.
There it is. And we're like, I thought his last name was Zing. We missed him, I don't know, what happened?
Thank you, folks, for tolerating my being away in New York, it's, I'll be back this weekend.
With birds.
Okay. Which one, of the warrant? Oh, on that, on the warrant.
So are we going, doing it by going through this, or by going through the budget?
I think the warrant is gonna be the, because this is what's gonna get printed and voted on. To the extent you wanna compare it, please.
I'll just leave it.
Please, well, no, it, it would be good to compare it against the budget.
Are you making sure that, right, we have the right number?
Um, that's why I printed this, because this is gonna alter Susan's spreadsheet.
Right, because you two mentioned it.
So. Um.
Can we call up the finance committee, meeting is called to order at?
Seven o'clock.
Six fifty-nine, right, he said, T-Mobile, someone said.
I don't think you can do that.
Okay.
Do you need a minute now, second?
You need a second to call the meeting to order?
Literally, I need six seconds.
We have to wait till seven.
Oh, you wanna wait? I thought you needed a second.
A second and several seconds, Jeff. Oh my god, you didn't type line this in, or did you cut and paste?
What's that?
Did you cut and paste this? Just tell me you cut and pasted it up and didn't type this all, and thank god, so then that means that there's likely few ever similar.
Oh, no, there shouldn't be any.
Yeah, okay. Well, you just only jacked it, so it's cheating.
Well, if something erroneously got changed.
I got it, I got it, and I get how that happens.
In either, you know, on either form, and then your, your big project, or my big project, is going and doing as-built on the budget.
As-built?
There you go, seven o'clock.
Making sure that, the, part of what happened was that we were entering the numbers directly onto that master sheet that had been called to another page. That's what I'm saying, the, uh, we call the finance committee meeting to order at seven PM, thank you.
Okay, so what we have here is a warrant, and as Frank was pointing out, I went ahead and said everyone supports everything, which isn't necessarily true. But why don't we go through the budget, and through all the special articles, and just note, note any holds, and then we'll come back to them? Um, why don't we actually just go through all of the, the, the budget and the special articles, no holds, and then come back to them, rather than discussing them? So in the, in the one hundreds, are there any, any holds in the one hundreds? IT is at twenty-eight thousand, which is what we just talked about. Uh, I'm just reviewing a couple changes that were more recent, town clerk, we upped the hours, office assistant, we upped the pay.
Yeah, they're two and up. Combine the two line items.
Yeah. Um.
Yeah, and we zeroed, and that was the way we left this zeroed one?
I will say this, how about this, I'll make one change in one hundred, I'll come back to one seventy-five, planning board clerk, I'm gonna put a hold on it.
Planning board. One oh one?
One seventy-five, planning board clerk. Um, two hundreds, are there any holds in the two hundreds?
I'd like to talk about fire department equipment.
Yeah.
I would, let's talk about part-time and overtime, I like to talk about everything in the part-time.
Okay.
But.
Um.
Is that part-time?
Anything else in the two hundreds?
The two twenties.
Two twenties. Five twenties. Holding on hold in two twenties?
Yes.
Uh, two, yeah.
Well, not the shares.
Not two twenty-one.
Well, not two two-oh, it's only, yeah.
It's the two two-oh.
Yeah.
Uh, anything in education?
Is that the number? Is there any point of doing, I don't know, you're like, that's your point asking about.
I don't like how much is going on.
Can we just complain? Is it okay to just complain?
Meanwhile, like, it could be worse, we could be sacking a third of the staff like they are in Pizzico.
Anything in the four hundreds?
I'll took care of snow and ice, right?
One thing to note for anyone who wasn't at the meeting yesterday, or maybe people were in and out, we combined snow and ice, salt and sand, and winter overtime. And that Donna's advice, um, we can just do that, and we noted combined for fiscal year twenty-five.
They're not on here, if this is listing them separate.
In the budget, in the budget, but it's, if the amounts are.
Right, no, I just forgot that I wrote the wrong thing.
The maps are right on the, they're on the warrant.
So Jeff, good thing the budget for simplicity, in the warrant for simplicity on the budget, so we have a track record of what happened prior years, will leave them separate, so I think that's a good strategic change.
Um, anything in five hundred human services? Um, six hundred culture and recreation?
Did we, did we ever get a meeting with the loan guy?
No, and I had to give that to Sarah and did not get a response, uh, to get back from David. One thing, you know what I'll do, I'm just gonna follow up with actually Donna, so if we, we're gonna, seven hundred debt service, just little hold on that.
And, and this is not a hold, but just let me say, eventually, we need to go through and put all the department's items together, so we know how much we're actually spending, like beach money, or should be in parks, or, you know what I mean, like, we should put everything together.
Beach money.
Six seventy.
Not in parks.
Beach money is six seventy-five, we have library in there, we should have a depart-, we should have a functional budget as well as a departmental budget.
Well, I think it's just, they'll have to look at the number.
Well, it happens all over the budget, Roger, you might look over that.
Well, I, I bet you next year that won't be there, because that was, that was a line item. That, that line item, I think.
I wanna put a hold on six seventy-five.
That, that line item, okay, we can talk about that, because I don't know where that.
And I'm gonna hold, well, I'm not gonna, but we are making other effort, nevermind. Seven hundred, any holds in seven hundred, other than a general hold, I'm gonna talk about it.
Just a general hold.
Memorial Day is the parade?
Yeah.
I said I'm running for select board, I didn't say I'm running for memorial.
You're gonna be running.
We're two, we're two of them.
Yeah, yeah, man, that's the debt service.
Yeah, you know, for Stephen Morse. You guys have knowledge.
Yeah, we're already, we're already. I gave off the craziness.
Okay, all right, we're gonna keep moving, because we gotta keep moving, nine hundred?
Wait, seven hundred is good.
No, general hold on seven hundred.
What happened to eight hundred?
I don't know. It's probably something we don't have in our.
Some of our number.
What do we not have in our, public water and sewer?
Probably.
Um, nine hundred.
And we stopped, well, seven percent people.
I'm gonna place a, a minor hold on nine fourteen.
Does it help insurance?
Yeah, sure.
Health insurance, and.
And how sure are we of the bonds and insurance being one twenty, didn't you just say that was an estimate?
Yes, it's an estimate, but it's probably.
But I would, yeah, we were told that early on, going up, I, after just seven percent.
But seven point one four percent sounds extremely specific.
Well, it's a rounded out, some, some people like rounding out numbers, some people like keeping the percentage the same, so you know what's going on.
Right.
Not speaking to anyone in particular.
There's.
Big audience out there.
Consistent audience, that's what we ask.
Okay.
Just little old me out here.
Um, Article four, is there a hold, and let me say for any of the special articles, if you intend on, on marking no, or being a no vote, place a hold, and if you have any other reason to hold it, also place a hold, but if no one places a hold, we're gonna keep, finance committee supports at two to zero, select board supports at three to zero.
Okay, I.
And not talking about it.
This is probably a law, I, I, why, why does under select board, you say select board and director, oh, that's the department.
Do you wanna hold on Article four?
No, but we're gonna, we had, did we have a hesitation legality discussion, in the resolving loan thing?
All right, it's a hold. Article five? No hold. Article six?
I, we, we resolved that last night.
Yeah. Article seven?
That reflects last night.
What's that?
Can I put a hold on that?
Yeah, sure.
Sure, on what, on the?
Sure.
Article seven? Um.
Is it gonna be for the same thing? Only if it's a new thing, I wanna be here on nine.
Article eight.
Doing my meditation.
Article eight, it's a fire truck.
Article, Article nine?
Is the flash and flow, no, it's a highway.
It's fine, the, the big F five fifty style truck, not, not in here, just says pile truck.
It says twenty sixteen. Oh, the existing one, okay, that's fine.
That, we know what it is.
That, that word.
Article ten?
One ton truck.
Article eleven, uh, I'm just gonna make a note here, because the finance committee might not have been here, the select board is suggesting, instead of saying to pay for the town's annual assessment in Southern Berkshire voluntary ambulance, to pay for ambulance services.
Because?
In the case that Southern Berkshire isn't our ambulance at some point, which we have no reason to believe, but it's.
Keep it flexibility, so the answer is flexibility, yes, okay, like it, good.
And can I, can I just, can I just ask you, Justin? Um, if you could, if we could maybe come back to Article eight, after we talk about the, uh, budget lines in the two hundreds around the fire department, so we just kind of think about it all together.
Yeah. Article eleven, um, was just that change, I, I didn't hear a hold. Article twelve, retiree stabilization fund from free cash. Article thirteen, to pay for retiree health and life benefit from the stabilization fund. Article fourteen, local cultural council. Article fifteen is the Mill Foil in Lake Garfield, and then, this is, select board only, would be sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, and nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, and those are select board only, I'm gonna put a hold on Article Lake Garfield Tax District, which is, um, sixteen, eighteen?
Eighteen. Did we miss Mill Foil?
Yes.
I can't hold on that.
Yes.
That's fifteen.
So Article eighteen, section seven, is my hold. It's worried, and that's why before, it's so worried, they kept the copy in the town clerk's office and voted on that, but then it didn't make it, then it got failed because of the hiccup.
Right.
So I figured, put it on the warrant.
I love that idea. That's why I've been asking about it. Look safety, the fire actually.
Wait, which, which, or which is that, section?
This is Article eighteen, right?
Article, Article eighteen, section seven, I'll deal with it, it's super minor, don't.
Okay.
Yep. I'll, I'll.
No, 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 Art, the one you were saying that with the clerk's office, if it was Article seventeen.
Okay, so, so, so Article seventeen is the.
Article seventeen was the real legislature.
Okay.
Article eighteen was the town.
Eighteen was the town, okay.
That number.
Okay.
Article sixteen was.
I still don't know what happened, but.
Article sixteen was, was setting the special time of the meeting.
So, I'm work, I'm working off of the last budget season's end.
Yeah. Well, we're gonna go back and go through the holds.
Right, but I.
So the first.
Although that, the Article eighteen isn't budget related.
I'm just getting the fire department stats right while we're working on it.
The first hold is, is planning board clerk, and I'm going to recommend that we just delete it, I'll just double check with Tom and Laura that they're okay with that, just take it right out.
Which one?
One seventy-five, planning board clerk. Is, is anyone opposed to that?
Yeah. No, and Laura's stipend is in there, and their, their, um, that contract to have the support services of the consultant is in our budget, so we're good, I think that's how we.
Well, and the, what we can also solve is that if we get the office assistant, they can do those duties, if possible.
And you guys are working on the jump description, right?
Yes.
Okay, not that you don't have other things to do, but we'll get you help, and then you'll be able to do this.
Yeah, okay, if you want, if you want to streamline, send it to me. Okay, now, conceptually?
Yeah.
The next, and next year, we can talk about getting rid of finance committee clerk, assistant to principal assessor, and board appeals clerk, which are all in there for one dollar.
Well, why can't we get rid of this year?
Because the one dollar is gonna change all of our FY twenty-four numbers, so we'll be off by three dollars.
I know, it's gonna be trav- travesty, Jeff.
Ramming Eric.
What if we go ahead and lower him to, to, to zero, though?
Yeah, I think we should, if we're planning.
That's still gonna change.
I mean, the idea, the idea, the idea is that we're.
We'll probably have to cut cash next year.
Yeah, no, the idea is that we're reorienting, and we might be a clerk, who can help, a, a assistant, so, I, yeah.
We're gonna keep them in. We'll keep those in.
I think we can keep them.
Okay. Um, so planning board clerk, how I'm moving forward is I'm removing that, I've just double checked with Tom and Laura that they're all settled. Um, two twenties is, is the fire equipment and maintenance, which I have no conflict of interest on, is the sixty thousand eight hundred.
So I had a quick conversation with Sean, and I think there was some confusion in when the original budget was put out, and he had conversations with us, and he is, did not want that, he wanted it to be level funded, and not reduced by the fifty-five hundred dollars. So somehow it got in there way back when, at, uh, being reduced.
Well, what was the backup for level funding budget, how much did it spend last year on that?
Uh, I'd have to go back and look.
I would suggest.
If, if you look, he, he has more, there's been a study, you know, year over year.
I was really surprised that that was going in.
Let me go look and see.
Yeah, let's see where did we spend the data.
Is that offset some kind of, uh, trade, so to speak, with the line below it? Which has a fifty-five hundred dollar increase?
Yeah, I didn't see it.
I don't know.
The what, the other expense line, no, that's level funded, oh, the, no, it's the uniforms, that increase, that, no, I don't think so.
But we paid for uniform costs too.
Um, there's uniform cost every year?
So I, I don't know if that was part of the conversation for that line item, but I do know that they have, that line item for the uniforms, or is my conversation with Sean, has been put off several years in a row.
The result of which is now it's one.
So, but are you gonna take a look at what he spent year to date?
Yeah, I just have to look here. Actually.
The total expense at this point is?
The total expense for what, the fire department?
No, for everybody, it.
I can't give you a number to general.
No, the entire budget is five, five.
No, that's also worrisome.
I see two different numbers, if I'm asking.
I seem to recall this from a meeting.
What's that?
Fire truck is coming up.
I kind of, so I kind of know what that was about, it was about having the equipment to put on the truck.
Okay.
Yeah, he said, he said it was one thou, one million fifty, estimated fifty thousand.
Education.
So he's.
What number was education?
Right, but it's on here at one point oh five.
Yeah, but that's for the physical truck.
Okay.
So when, he won't know the equipment, and he can do to get.
Right, 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 right.
It's like, thank you, the desks for the larger, we don't know. What?
So.
You don't know, he's trying to give us.
From, from, from the spreadsheet.
I didn't see anything.
The spreadsheet that we've been originally working on, in all these, all the draft, there is a spending history tab, and that tab goes back to FY nineteen, and it's been a special minor problem. Because I did a, a large analysis of every line in the budget, and then I was told that that tab's not reliable, but then I said, in a meeting, that that tab, I've been told that tab is not reliable, and then I was told the tab is reliable.
Okay, so let's look at the tab as a general proximity.
So I. So, so here's, here's what I can tell you, based on the tab, is that FY nineteen through FY, uh, twenty-three, it's grown.
The, what, this is the maintenance.
The maintenance, it's to the twen, the two twenty, the fire department vehicle equipment maintenance is expenses. Last year, it spent fifty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-four.
Like, in last.
I'm sorry, in, in FY, well, FY twenty-three.
In FY twenty-three, he spent fifty-four thousand.
Fifty-two thousand.
Fifty-two thousand.
Nine hundred and sixty-four.
Nine hundred and sixty-four, I'm calling that fifty-three thousand. Um.
What about the history?
History, it's as low as twenty-six, and it's as high as thirty-five over the previous, uh, three years.
High as thirty-five?
Yeah, but.
Within that three-year period, so it went, it went from, in FY nineteen, the expenses were thirty-four thousand eight hundred, in FY twenty, they were thirty-five thousand one hundred, in FY twenty-one, they were thirty-one thousand four hundred, in FY twenty-two, they were twenty-six thousand four hundred, and then it popped up to fifty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-four.
I wonder if that one-time cost was, he bought tires for one of those fire trucks, I don't know if it was the tanker or the Alaba.
So I don't know, I don't know historically, what, is there a historic on what the, I don't see historic.
I think the appropriation, the appropriation was historically like thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand. It was just the year they went to buy the tires, that bumped up to sixty one time, but now we've been shooting for sixty.
But do you know what, did you say what he spent so far this year?
I don't, I don't have that, um, hold on.
So in twenty twenty-three.
You want, is there a general ledger back here?
No, no, I have, I have it on my phone.
I wouldn't be able to read the number, uh.
Why are you doing that? You, you, are you handling the invoices for his, the fire department?
Yes, I'm handling the invoices for fire department and, um, DPW.
Okay.
There haven't been many for firing.
Right, well, he told me there wasn't a lot, but if you give them to me, or I come up and go through, I'll do a spreadsheet, so we don't get into this at the budget time, which.
Yeah, I can.
Won't take me more than fifteen minutes and months.
Yeah, when they, when they come in.
Yeah, you can call me, and I'll just come up here and do it in a second, so.
So I'm just. Give me one second, just let's see.
I wish we knew what the cost was.
Yeah, Justin, someone had told me in fire department, wasn't there a individual that, that's, going along with the steel on the train, remember? He, someone said he used to work on the fire.
Yeah, a little bit, I mean, he, he wasn't, uh, you know, doing major, major repair.
But someone said, someone had told me that when he left, they were more dependent on that.
Yeah, it's very possible, yeah.
They were dependent on an outside resource.
Yeah, Warren was very mechanically inclined, and he did a lot of, uh, mechanical repairs.
Yeah, maintenance.
But he wasn't like, he probably wasn't, uh, you know, changing the tires.
He wasn't doing. Right, right, he wasn't, not a coordinate, but someone told me, you know, nobody picked up that skill, and they were dependent on the outside person to do.
Yeah, bulldog fire.
Yeah, yeah.
He's a part of their.
All the time, so that, you know.
So, um, this year, they were, they had an appropriation of sixty-six thousand three hundred, and this is as of, uh, this, so I'm still waiting for the, I'm still waiting for the, uh, the March one to come in, usually comes in on the fourteenth, um, of, of each month, they have spent, um, oops, I just lost it, period. Uh, they have spent twenty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty-three cents, so they have, as of right now, they have remaining forty-two thousand three hundred and eight dollars and forty-seven cents.
Twenty-two thousand?
A, as of February.
The February.
Forty-two thousand?
Yes, a, as of, as of, as of February twenty-nine.
The problem is that it, it's not consistent, so that chunk of money could go at one go for an inspection.
I understand, it's a question of level funding or how we do.
Right, and I'm just saying, we can't, I don't wanna see us making the assumption, it's not like an electric bill.
I, I just wanted to see how far off he was.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, uh, the other thing is, you know, I'd rather, I don't want him to cut on his maintenance.
Yeah, yeah, let's just change.
Because it's a public safety issue, and I, you know, he is using the outside person, he told that personally, someone else told me in the firehouse, they lost the one guy, and they're more dependent on it, so.
So your, your feeling is to keep it at the sixty thousand eight hundred, or to go back to the sixty-six thousand three hundred?
To level fund it, or to drop it down to five, fifty-five hundred?
Or no, to, like, or lose it fifty-five?
Right, the level, level funding would be sixty-six three, which is what he's asking for, and we currently have it at sixty-eight hundred.
And we, and there's no process for us approving repairs, he just doesn't know what he needs.
Yeah, but I, I.
I'm not, I'm not complaining, I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, but there's also standards.
I understand that.
There, there's standards, whatever the, you know, there is a process for that time, hours, and, um.
Yeah, yeah.
The problem is, we, whatever notes there were for what supported that number, we no longer have that.
Yeah, I wouldn't know where that initial sixty's twelve was, that's quite different.
But it's, I think it's pretty clear, the goal was to just, like, it wasn't a consensus.
So with the budget, I have it at sixty.
At least the goal was to level fund it two rounds.
Yeah, let's just level fund it.
No, between the two.
What was you gonna do? Which ones, the fire department, other expenses?
Yeah, you have, come on.
Yeah.
They magically were the same number.
No, no, that's not.
So, so I don't know, there was that much more analysis other than that.
So let me see what other.
So Sean wants a sixty-six thousand three hundred for equipment and maintenance. And there was a mistake earlier, it never should have really been dropped, then give it to him.
No, I mean, I have a mistake happen.
Yeah, but I, I, I think what you do is you level fund it now, we have it open, where we can start documenting, what are they spending for truck, what's the expenditure, what's it doing?
Well, we're, we're.
We don't have enough data, go back and ask them, if that was a question. So, you don't cut all maintenance when it's a public safety issue.
Right.
So I would say level fund it, but we have to take this opportunity to put ourselves in a better shape.
Which is, which is why I put a hold on all of two twenties for that exact issue.
I asked him why it's up to sixty-six K, and he says we're paying double and triple for services and products, basically, the costs of maintenance are.
Yeah, it's fine, so go back up.
So, so, is anyone opposed to changing two-twenty fire department equipment and maintenance to sixty-six thousand three hundred? Okay, then it's going, it will be at sixty-six thousand three hundred. And, and then, other expenses, we discussed, it, uniforms, uh, or something of that nature?
Yeah, the uni, fire department, other expenses is the ones for uniforms, but that, I don't think we can change.
Yeah. So. So fifteen thousand six hundred, there was a hold on that, so I'm just going through it.
Right.
And then the other, the fire department compensation, I can't participate on, and I need to use the restroom, so please update me on those.
Okay, and we're still leaving fire hall lease in there as a placeholder, right?
It's a placeholder, there is, I mean, the part, part of the problem is there's so many moving parts on what's happening with the fire department. While there needs, you know, the, the, uh, going, you know, to shared services, compensation, the legal side of it, where we got Donna involved in now, it's just not that easy. My feeling is, we leave this as a placeholder, but the message to Sean and others there, there has to be discussion, can't have a discussion with you and not have a discussion with me, we need to start meeting and talk about how is this gonna be handled. It, it's, you know, you can.
And we need to bring it to closure.
We need to bring it to closure, but he needs to commit the time to do it.
Well, we can't say he needs, 'cause he has it, so, you know, I think we should.
Well, I, I think there's, there's a table out here, to me, until we have closures, the lease payment doesn't go up until we come in and sit down and talk about how we're gonna do it.
We don't release that money, that money is.
It'll, it'll be released, it'll stay at the same way.
A few tech, technical things, I don't, I, yes, it's complicated, but all of us have ve- very much experience in dealing with complications, and not knowing an unforeseen circum- circumstance, we deal with that all the time. What happens here is the problem that we get a start, with Sean, we get a stop, a problem, so we don't have a consistent effort, so the first thing we need is a consistent effort with him, which we tried to do with Frank and Roger. However, it's a year later, and we still don't have a lease, and that was pretty much, you know, an elected official and being responsible, which I do share in finance, financial responsibility, the fact that it's a year later, and we don't, don't have a lease, really concerns me. Obviously, Roger's the town administrator now, so he's a different responsibility, and I would like to say the finance committee, and I would like to do it, and it's gonna get Sean's backup, but it's principles over personalities, I would like to take Roger's seat at the table, and I don't know how the select board wants to handle it, and start scheduling, I mean, if you want to meet at ten o'clock at night, I don't care, start scheduling meetings to, one at a time, pull apart these issues and come to some conclusion. Because when you go through compensation, there are a lot of issues, and it was the finance committee and the select board both agreed on zero-based budgeting, which meant we rolled back all the assumptions and said, what do they actually need now? And when we look at compensation, and what they're paying for, and how the overnights are working, and their response time, that does not line up either. So I really think, since it is, as Frank's saying, such a complicated, circuitous thing, that the entire budget needs to be pulled apart and put back together with the lease, because, you know, as Donna said the other day, when you had thirty thousand, you were willing to look the other way, it was, you know, black, white, gray. With this amount of money on the table, and what they've asked before, I, I just, in due conscience, cannot look the other way, we need a formal relationship. And, um, I just think that even though it's uncomfortable, and a lot of us doing it around personalities, it's really about principles, what the town can give, what we expect in exchange, and we need to come in with that mindset, because we have not been there.
We also need better data, which is.
That's what we're gonna do.
Because we tried to get some data from, um, we tried to get data from the treasurer on the fire department compensation piece, what's been happening, and the way that the, the numbers are broken out, you can't actually dissect it.
Right, and, uh, we can, if we have the right number, uh, we can.
We don't have the right numbers, we cannot use those numbers for that purpose.
But also, for two oh four, we had one twenty-nine, it's going up to two hundred sixty-one thousand, I, that is.
Going up a lot, a hundred percent.
And, and once again, my concern, and I think all of us have here, I'm just saying it, one, I would like to pay the firefighters, you know, however they want per call, per, whatever it is, I would like to pay them, but I really do question how these overnights are working, what the response time is, paying local people to say overnight, I don't see any, which is more than half of the overnight stays of thirty-five thousand dollars.
So, it's not, that's an important, that's what I was trying to communicate to you.
Yeah.
The numbers we were looking at, because of the way they were combined, do not represent what we thought they represented.
So what do they represent?
There, I, there is some agglomeration of several different categories, because if.
Well, I asked her for more clarity.
Right, if you look how it's actually broken out, when you look at the like weekly, the payroll that's bi-weekly, there are more categories, and what's happened there is it's been lumped in, so I, like, talked to Sean, he's doing one sleepover a week.
Right, but then we still have to understand why he's getting half of those extra hours, him and his brother, like, what are they doing, and what are we getting for that, and what, I, and I'm not saying I don't deserve it, I'm just saying, we need to know where that thirty-five thousand is coming.
What I'm saying is, yeah. What I'm trying to tell you is that number is misleading in what it represents, and it's because we're reading different categories together, that number isn't telling you an answer.
I understand what you're saying, Susan. Right, but that still raises the question about when people are doing overnights.
Well, we have to get data before we make any conclusions.
Jeff is trying to talk, yes, Jeff and Lauren.
One little thing, I, Jeff and Lauren, we say, Lauren's prettier than I am, and smarter as well, and nicer. But anyway, um, I, I really feel uncomfortable here, listening to this conversation, and I know I wasn't involved in the group that really dealt all the work with the fire department. But I think it's quite likely that we could be asked, both as select board and finance committees, we could be asked, justify a hundred and thirty-two percent increase in compensation. Justify a hundred and ninety-four percent increase in the cost of the lease. And I think it's only fair for the people we report to, of the town, the citizens of the town, uh, that's only, it's only, it's expected that somebody will ask that question, I know I would ask that question if I was sitting there. And if we don't have the answer to that question, clear answers, then shame on us for approving it, because I think that we have a responsibility to be able to answer those questions, and not just say we're having trouble scheduling meetings for a whole year.
So, my recommendation is that, um, it's a tough one, but I think we should bring the town council to the table, and have a meeting with the select board, finance committee, and fire, and just setting out the expectations about why we're pushing and what we need, because it's coming down to, we don't support the firehouse, that's not it at all, who doesn't wanna support the firehouse? It's at what level, how, and with what responsibility, and I, I don't think any of us, for lack of a better thing, have done a good job at making that clear, and maybe with the town council presence and understanding our legal requirements, as Jeff just said, there might be some movement, and I am very happy with Susan, like we did in the transfer station, to really dig into the data, to understand it, so we can really get to the baseline of what they're really saying. And if we are gonna support the fire department at this level, then there have got to be strings, there have got to be strings.
Meanwhile, I feel like, I, I'm not gonna feel comfortable till I feel like I have a better handle on where the, like, how that.
That's exactly my point. We all share.
I did ask Sean today to please, I'm not comfortable with the numbers that we got, because of how it's broken out from, from the treasurer, so I've asked Sean to please give me numbers, the, and far as what, who's showing up to how many calls, so that we can get a better.
Who's doing overnights, what else are they doing, and what's our response time now?
Yes. Better numbers from his time, because I'm also a little uncomfortable with how the payroll system is working, for other reasons.
Yeah, we're gonna keep on finding.
And I, I, there's some reason to feel that way right now, so until I can match those two. And I, I, there's some reason to feel that way right now, so until I can match those two numbers, I'm not gonna feel like I understand what's happening.
This is not about, just to echo it, this is not about not supporting the fire department. It is about our fiduciary responsibility to understand what's being asked for in the budget. And we have to be able to understand it, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, Jeff, I honor up to you, I apologize. But there's also, there's the, you know, the elephant in the room is also about the shared services. You know, yeah, but.
I don't agree, it's not happening this year.
Yeah, but.
And if it is, we need a special meeting, so we need.
Yeah, but let me finish, okay? First of all, it's there. Two is, if we're gonna invest this money in here, and we're gonna be the shared service to fire department. You look around, our fire department, in my opinion, is way above the others, and they're gonna be it. We're making the investments, and this is the direction we're going, we need to know that now.
So you're saying you would roll back on it?
No, I would roll back, I wanna know what the concept is, you know, you've talked to them about maybe Otis doing something with Otis. Well, how does that look now? We may set it up here now in six months, but we're doing Otis, you need this. We need a little bit of an understanding of where we're going, because it's not only about, you know, you're talking about making the investment this year, they're asking for money the next two or three years out.
I'm sorry, we're saying the exact same thing, and that's why I'm saying, start where we, the budget, we wanna wrap it up by the sixteenth, start where we are, lease, compensation, understanding, dig in. And then we have to have the strategic conversations moving forward, what else is happening, because we're not gonna get it done between now and the budget, and I don't.
But you, we're gonna have to put placeholders. It's like, you know, we don't put a placeholder in there for the amount you need for lease, but you don't get it until you have a new lease signed.
Yes, but I can't see increase from the finance department perspective, and we didn't have a meeting on it yet, so Jeff, I'm speaking for me and our whole committee. I don't see how we can give them any more money than we already have in this current budget, I mean, I, I mean, if you want to whip it around, so I don't know if we need to have that.
Yeah, it, it should be built on data, but there's gotta be transparency.
Right, but, but once again, Frank, I'm agreeing with you, but what I'm saying is, we can keep on saying that until we can actually have an honest conversation on the lease, on, on what Susan's saying, the data.
We need to come to some conclusion.
We can't even come, we can't, I, we can't even really have those conversations until we know exactly who's doing the work, what they're spending, what their reporting is, what their response times, what they're struggling with, why they're in overnights, what we're paying for, so we have to do that before we do that, it's just the way it works, I think.
What were you gonna say?
Uh, two things, on the compensation, do you wanna hold your ears? Uh.
Go.
Uh, you have a number in there of three hundred and one thousand three hundred dollars, and according to my notes, it was three twenty-one three. So that's just to check the numbers.
Is this for compensation?
Yeah.
It's currently, and actually, I should say, the two sixty-one was with something that, I'm gonna correct the number in a minute. The two sixty-one was something Roger and I were playing with today, messing around with the call rate, going back to the existing call rate that was proposed at fifty. It actually is two thirty-one six ten.
So that's the right number?
So that, the correct number there would be two thirty-one six ten.
Okay, what's the second thing?
Three twenty-one six ten, okay. My other thing is, and I had been supporting this bonus thing, and not against it, you know, it's against one way they're gonna do it. Uh, but it wasn't against my philosophy, I'll lose. Until, I just got the, uh, town manual report for fiscal twenty-three. And I looked at what various, uh, fire department members were making. And if you add the fiscal year twenty-three, what they were paid, and add the bonuses to that.
What bonuses?
The proposed.
The, the proposed.
We've already moved beyond that yesterday.
Ah, the proposed stipend.
Twenty-five.
We already moved beyond that yesterday.
Yeah, but that's fine, but if you, if.
If, if. What's your sentiment?
If I said, there was just that Sean would be making a thousand dollars a week off, just under.
That was exactly, yeah.
Chris would be just under seven hundred dollars a week.
With no job descriptions and no formal relationship as employees, so we raise that issue to council, Mickey.
Okay, because, I mean, that would come up to a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars.
Raise that issue to council, good.
Thank you.
And just, you know, I understand we don't know the numbers yet, but my thinking is somehow to go back to zero-based budget, look at maybe what we're paying for overnights that we don't need to, because there's really no benefit for local overnight, how many are local, how many aren't. Take whatever that number is, figure out how to apply it to a per-call, a per-shift rate, and then leave a small number that Sean is the chief who decides who gets stipends, so that we wouldn't, increasing the budget, but we'd be playing neutral in that.
I, I just wanna.
I don't know, within that two sixty-one, I'm not comfortable with that.
Two thirty-one, the two sixty-one was the experimental.
Still not good in the two thirty, the one twenty-four is definitely two thirty.
I just wanna riff off what, uh, Mickey is saying.
Okay.
The one twenty-nine.
Um, and, and what Eileen is saying. And that is from ten thousand feet looking down. If we're paying essentially competitive salaries for a town our size, and we're paying it not really as payroll, we're paying it as a fee to the, I always get the names wrong, but to the, to the fire department. But it's not like our police department where we pay it as payroll, we have a administrative supervisory structure. We know what we're buying in terms of the compensation and how much people are getting, and, and if there's a bonus structure, what have you. I mean, the question is, are we, you know, we're, we're confusing when we're treating people as employees and when they're some, they're workers of some other organization that we're paying their salaries. So it's getting very blurry, and that's where I think some of the confusion lies.
Just for, and I'm not disagreeing, but I, this was an issue that came up last week that's since been clarified, or went, since our conversation with Donna. So the, the original ethics issue was that if they're paid by the town as part of the fire department, but also paid as directors or members of the fire company, there could be a problem, but in fact, they are not paid by the fire company. Their only money they're getting at present is through the fire department for calls, et cetera. That may not eliminate any of this conversation, but I do think it does away with the particular ethics concern that Donna raised, which I just wanted everyone to know. I, I haven't heard back from Donna, but I'm guessing, having looked at the numbers and given them to her, that that will be, that will resolve that issue. That doesn't resolve the question of if we're giving someone a substantive stipend to say be fire chief and supervise the paperwork and we're not getting paperwork, that could still be an issue. Like, there's no contest, I'm just saying.
Yeah, it's, and, and I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about process more than ethics right now.
Yes.
You know, that it's confusing, and it leads to our bodies being confused, the finance committee and the select board being confused, and probably, for good reason, the public being confused.
Right, so, so let's try to come up with an idea for a plan to, we all agree now on the issues, they've been teased out. Frank and Roger have had some experience trying to get this done, what is a plan now for us to, um, move forward on these? I mean, I proposed one, you can propose something else, but I, I would really just, I, I mean, I really think we need to move through this. And, you know, I agree with you, Frank, that regionalization, whatever you call it, is a big deal, but if, you know, as I always say to my, what did I said to Jeff and Roger? This is where we wanna go, this is where we are, so like, what are the baby steps in between? And that is not even something that, because we would go down that rabbit hole without worrying about what Donna plays for the fire.
And in this moment, what we have to worry about is, do we have a fire department that can respond to calls here?
That will, if we don't get that.
And it's possible that, yes, of course, we have mutual aid. So when the call comes in, they may also be responding to calls elsewhere, but at the end of the day, we still need them, because we need them to respond to calls here, so.
My, I think the starting point is to get Sean and whoever he thinks, just to have a meeting with us, the select board and the finance committee, brainstorming, understanding, just have a dialogue, what we need, what we're going, why we're doing it, okay? And we need to, you know, it's not that we want to, you don't wanna help them, but it's not that, it's not just about writing checks, it's about having structure. We have to have consistency, what we do with different departments, police department, department of work, the fire department, and there needs to be that consistency, and how do we get it done? You can't, you can't go and have a meeting here and then have a meeting there, it's too complex, there's too many people involved that we need input from to be done.
I think it's been, we've been trying to let it flow exclusively through the town administrator historically, and because it is complicated, there hasn't been clarity in the message, and it is a complicated message, there's no question.
It's not that complicated.
I think it's somewhat complicated because of the personality, it becomes. It's complicated because why do you need the shift program?
But here's the point, Frank, we did that, I thought, we had that shit there. And, and the message wasn't necessarily heard, so that's why I'd like to include the town council to clarify anything.
I don't, I don't, I, I think that, I don't, I don't think at this point, I don't think we need the town council at this point.
Okay.
What I do think is, there was a history between the former town administrator, I saw some of that in the contract negotiations, you saw the emails, you know. That's wrong, you know, that, it's a new day. And, you know, what I've been trying to talk to them about transparency and partnership, but you can't do the end around, because we got a new town administrator, they did the end around. But that's past, that's history, we gotta talk about moving forward.
I didn't mean it that way, I just mean, when you have a complicated system, it's difficult to understand, and it passes through too many people, it gets, it becomes.
You know, every time I sit down with Sean, I learn a lot, I learn a lot about the issues he's facing, you know, 'cause, you know, it's twenty-four hours, seven days. I ran a place like that with twenty-four hours, seven days, and, you know, we talked about it, so I, I know it's complex. But until he gets in here and talks about it, what he wants to do, what his ambition is, and we can't, you know, we just, we need him in here.
Can I, um, bring the conversation back to the budget?
Yeah.
And whether or not you want to just sort of leave it where it is and have conversations, because when do we have to finalize the budget by?
Well, for printing by next Tuesday, hopefully.
Where's the build-out of the two sixty-one, is that on the next?
Technically, seven days before town meeting, it needs to be posted. We always try to do.
More.
More, so that people can look at it and review it. So the, what, just, we had talked about the sixteenth is kind of good, that's not even particularly early. Legally, we could do it the following week, the twenty-third, the sixteenth is on schedule.
I'd rather see us do it by the sixteenth, and then if we have to make a change, do it on the floor, because I think people should have it sooner rather than later. And I also don't completely trust the mail, so.
So is your thought then to keep it at the two thirty-one, or, I mean, 'cause.
I'm gonna say two thirty-one unless there's a, a conversation this week that changes it.
Because, just to kinda go back to where the budget was, the, the hundred and twenty-five dollars for the weekends, uh, for the weekend coverage, five thirty a.m. to five thirty p.m. The evening coverage, the evening coverage, five thirty p.m., that, that was raised to one twenty-five from one hundred. So you want, yeah, so you wanna back it down to what it was?
No, I, I had it at one twenty-five.
Yeah, so.
So the number I, the number I produced is a hundred and twenty-five for the shift rate.
Yeah.
Uh, still forty dollars for the duty chief rate, forty dollars for the training, and fifty dollars for the calls, which is what we talked about earlier. What I joined out was that we, remember we played with raising the call rate.
What about this, so the sixty-five is fifty?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then the only other question that.
Which is what they had initially asked for.
The only other question that I think we have to support with that to come to a final number is the breakout of,
two thirty-one.
Of how that relates to all the things that we saw paid.
That we saw paid, I, yes, we do have to figure that out, and he promised me some numbers from his side, so we can actually get a clear picture of how many, who's doing how many shifts and who's doing how many, because the numbers we got are not breaking that out. The only other way we have to do it is we could pull up the weekly, the bi-weekly payrolls and actually put person by person, which is a pain in the butt, but we'd actually break it out, and she's not breaking it out. The thing that's not in this number is any of the stipend issue. So that's, right now, that's at zero.
Right.
So, so basically, the, uh, that line item of, uh, the fire department compensation will go as the two thirty-one six ten.
Two, we had.
Two three one six ten at present.
Oh, what's the three oh one?
That was another number that was.
An older number.
Sorry.
An older number, and I don't know what that would translate to.
And the two fifty-one was older too, yes.
I think that, I think that three oh one three hundred had, uh, like sixty-five thousand dollars in stipend or something like that, so, back then. And so is the thought then to keep the fire lease?
I'd leave, I'm gonna leave it there.
I would put fifty thousand as a placeholder, and I have issues with the hundred thousand, but I think that's where we're going, whether it ends up being for salary or for whatever.
You know.
But I just wanna note that we are at the exact number they asked us for, that we wouldn't be, an additional hundred fifty thousand, we said, no way, which are skin in the game, and that's exactly what we're giving them.
What's the hundred, the hundred thousand number that you just brought there was what?
When we sat with the police department, when we sat with the fire department, they said, we need a hundred fifty thousand more from the town. And we said, well, what are you gonna do, and what's this, and what's that, and now we're giving them the exact a hundred fifty thousand that they asked for, without.
Well, that was just for the lease, well, that was just for the lease, they, they wanted a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Just for the lease, you're right, you're right, you're right. Yeah, but then, all right, whatever.
Okay, let's move on.
Um, I think we have that section squared away.
What a plan, what a plan.
No, I don't, I think we have a plan, I'm not gonna follow it squared away.
And who's gonna have a called meeting? Uh, that is the question, like, if, do we wanna, are we gonna try to do a meeting that involves the entire board, or do we?
No, I think we ask Sean, you've been communicating with Sean, I've been communicating with Kevin. Uh, I can communicate with Kevin, Kevin and Sean could come in, maybe he tends to like less people, less.
Uh, that's my feeling too, if we try to.
And we bring it in here, and I think Kevin's been very reasonable, and when I've talked to Sean, it's been very reasonable. So maybe we say, Sean, you and Kevin, could you come in and talk to the finance committee and the select board meeting about a variety of issues? You and I can talk about what the issues are, so we can, you know.
We could also, if we don't, if we do one F C and one S B, maybe we can keep it smaller and if we don't have to announce the meeting, we can just do it whenever it works.
Yes, exactly.
That would be beautiful.
Okay. Um.
Actually, I think it was worse.
I didn't say I've gotten over it.
So, six seventy-five beach monitor, Eileen, you, you wanted to, you wanted to mention something, we also.
You know.
For the four twenty-three, you just, you had said, you wanted to. Oh, like a.
Here's showing that we can buy them, didn't feel, thank you for raising that, I think that was up there.
You know, this is. This is very petty, you, but it's a stipend, and I don't think it needs to increase. It's thirty-six hundred this year, thirty-six hundred last year, the beach monitor, I think that, like, it's a stipend job, it's, you know.
So I'm gonna give everyone an interesting lesson about the ethics law, if they don't already know. The beach monitor was last year my cousin, cousin doesn't count as immediate family. So it's actually technically not a conflict of interest, it's not a stipend, it's hourly wage.
Okay, so what was the hourly wage last year?
Five eighteen.
Four percent lower than.
Right, so I don't know why he's made four percent, oh, but, oh.
Cola.
Yeah, but he's not a seasonal, I mean, he's a seasonal employee, he is a seasonal employee, it's not staff.
So you're saying it shouldn't be subject to COLA?
Correct, because it's a short term, what's the hourly wage, eighteen, was it eighteen?
I don't know, uh, let's see, beach monitor, three days a week, six hours at twenty bucks an hour proposing a three and a half percent pay increase. So it was twenty.
I'm saying a twenty bucks an hour, that's, I mean, that's a good rate for anybody coming home from college.
It's, it's significantly higher than minimum.
Exactly, so I'm being picky you, but you know, I have, I don't love beach monitor.
Not the person, not the person.
Position.
Your cousin was lovely, I, we got to know each other very well, he was very, and we stopped by the burger garden.
He's gonna have your car, too.
No logs allowed at the beach?
He didn't get out of the car, he stopped by a burger tent to get out of the, you know, he got to know us quite well, we go down the road.
Folks, let's, let's try not to get all jammed up over a hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Yeah, let's try not to go down a, 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 a hundred and twenty-six dollars, he's not wrong.
Oh, so really, that's what it's all about, nothing but mine, your dog and, uh.
Back to beach committee, oh my God, Burger Garden has a private mic, all right, seven hundred.
Yeah, wait, you have the Lake Arch of Tax District, you buy a circle, be a trade.
No, I'm thinking our other private lake, our other private lake, Justin.
I was gonna say the name.
I didn't, I said our other private lake.
So you're, so you're.
Leave it, I withdraw, just wanted to hear it. Mickey, I can't believe you didn't come to my defense. Mickey, I can't believe you didn't come to my defense, okay?
7, 700 is debt service, I'm gonna check in with Donna because I don't get a response from you to bank.
I'm gonna start checking another bank.
But why do you let me call them, Justin, we were supposed to do it together, what, what, what do you think of this?
It's a promise, I email Sarah.
Who's Sarah?
Not my person, the trade.
Sarah, huh?
I've been asking Sarah for things.
Can you please put me on it?
Nonstop for one.
But I've been telling you, I will take some of that, so I'm happy to do this, so I just see if you can get to David, I don't get any sense. I got the stuff from Sarah today, but we need Donna.
No, I'm not saying she's been good.
She says you're welcome Roger, so.
I hate to bother her every waste moment.
Okay, so I will tell Sarah and you can take a few days off, Justin.
Okay.
Saturday, so.
So, and what do we want, we want to know if these are the correct numbers.
Well, no, I'm not really concerned.
One, now moving forward.
There's that whole thing where we, we made the useful life to the vehicle 10 years instead of five. And I think where else could I, I'm just gonna double check. There was no other holds on 700, I don't think, other than we'll check it. 914 health insurance, uh, Rogers doing a deep dive into it. We think that number's really pretty good and has a cushion. I think the reason that the retiree spouses on there is because they aren't holding up from that. And we're changing a couple plans around, but we're pretty sure that number's pretty good. There's a hold on Article 4 revolving funds about Valley Galley.
Yes, um, last year we had a lot of, there was a problem with the community center and how the funds would be.
Yeah, we agreed.
We cleaned everything up, so now this is straight up.
Yeah, so what it used to be was, I don't know why.
And we, all the repairs are done?
So what it used to be was that the community center Valley Galley spent out of the Valley Galley rent, for no good reason.
Right.
And we said that's, doesn't make any sense. The community center does have its own revolving fund, but only for fees that they collect, that they can spend on, you know, little things that come up with the community center. The Valley Galley, that we collect, I think it's 1100 dollars a month. So, that's, you know, that money could be spent just on upkeep of the building and whatnot.
Okay.
I guess it is a good question, what do we do when that money just builds and builds and builds?
And does it, because we didn't have enough money for maintenance last year, that's why I'm going to do that.
Well, I, I'm gonna, I'll send Jim a note just to check in on how, what the status of the maintenance of the unit is.
I'm not saying it's wrong, I just wanted to make sure we.
But it's a good moment, it reminds me that I need gas.
And I have my list of things to do is to figure out how, see what's in those accounts.
In the revolving funds?
Yeah.
So I have one lead, which is when we get those monthly reports, I think that there might even be a separate report called revolving fund.
There is, I just want to double check and see what that is about. Because I just want to make sure that's what's.
So, you know, I have a trick and I'm sure you have it too, but before you start diving in, you have a meeting with the accountant, you say, I need a historical accounting of this. See the report you get, neither it'll tell you it or not, and then you could dive in if it's not right, but don't go down the rabbit hole yourself, that is absolutely something.
As long as we're doing rabbit holes.
Okay, why is that great?
As long as you're doing revolving fund rabbit holes, I don't think that we should do anything about it this town meeting, but can we ditch the composting bins? The count, what the, what's that all about? Because we're not using it to pay for composting bins. We could.
Yeah, but I think there, you buy, what is it, they're like 10 dollars up at the finisher's.
Is that what that is?
I think that's what I do.
Yeah, you can buy a little.
You got the recycle.
Actually, that's actually, you know what, I.
No, no, little, they're little green plastic bins that you can go your composters in.
Oh, that's.
I thought, okay.
I don't, I mean, we need to.
I thought that was, what about the blue recycling?
And just the.
I don't know, that's what I was saying.
Yeah.
That's what I thought they were, the revolving.
And just so you know, I did happen to talk to Jen Brown about the fleet farm, they're not even up to 1500, they've collected the first 50 signs at $25 each, so they're 50 times 25. Because that's for the news. Yeah, 350, so, and then I need to pause, so.
How, how much is 50 times 25?
It's a lot.
50 times 10 is 500, 50 times 10 is 1000, that's almost 50, not enough.
Yeah.
We need not even.
Actually, I found the whole thing. So we might need, right, and there's.
And you're a finance major.
I'm a finance major, I'm a budget expert, that's what we use for.
Okay, so I'm going to see, we need to increase that just because there's no harm in making it.
That 25, right, so they're thinking they had the first 50, they're ready for the next 50 and then they think it's gonna take a while, but that's.
Well, maybe we just increase because it doesn't hurt.
To what, 3000?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, why don't we just, as long as we're laughing, we're just increasing at 3000. Is anyone opposed to raising the spending limit on the 911 sign revolving fund at 3000?
No.
It's done.
Okay.
Article 7, Mickey.
Well, um, I see they're the same numbers here that we had last week, but we took out the medical vehicle. And so we can't be put that in and pay down some of these other loans?
We did, we put it in Article.
We changed the way we pay them.
Flip the page to Article 9. We had had previously 30,000 coming from free cash and 160 from stabilization. That's a huge hit to our 665,000 in stabilization. So we use that additional money to lower the hit on the stabilization fund, which is still a large hit. 130,000 out of 665. We took, we took free cash that was freed up by not paying the medical rescue vehicle and we're applying against a $190,000 highway truck to take less from stabilization.
Okay. Alright, so the other thing, you know, I would just like to make those little numbers for the two trucks rounded. Because to be carrying numbers, I don't like that, it's just plain stupid, in my mind, so.
Well, okay, well, if we're gonna round them, let's round them to 1000, so 30,000 and 8,000.
Yeah.
That's good.
Is that, is everyone, is anyone opposed?
So you end up with an even number that's left, not what you're paying down, because right now the highway truck is 118,569 dollars and 60 cents. The tandem axle is 98,299 dollars and 95 cents.
That's just what happens.
Well, no, no, you can round it off if you.
For the cents, not the dollars.
So you round it up to 100 dollars.
Right.
So if you pay down, um, the 25,000 on the tandem axle, we have 25,000 dollars in the, in the 700. If you make the number here on to 7,000, 799 dollars and 95 cents, that'll reduce the balance to 65,500. Isn't that a nice number? That's only adding an extra 33 dollars and 30 cents.
The money, by the way, the money doesn't really matter, it's arbitrary, it's how much is left in free cash, we could raise it 2,000 dollars. Right?
Tell me that.
So don't worry about 30 dollars.
Alright, so then let's.
That's why, that's why she's saying why don't we just do it?
Well, I think, I think there, I'll tell you one reason. Because then you go back and you say it was a third, and next year you pay a third, and the following year you pay a third and it's done.
Yeah, but then you have to, you're gonna have to, so you're gonna have to take the tandem axle and you're gonna have to say, how much is a third of 98,000, 95 cents? This is, so you have, like I say, it works with the library, we're paying 100,000.
Well, what is the library going to start out at?
It wasn't an uneven number.
It was an uneven number?
Yes.
That's what we're telling you.
Yeah, it wasn't uneven number, we.
It wasn't or was?
It was.
Right, they're all uneven numbers, that's what we're trying to.
Evened it out.
Library, it made it.
Okay, Mickey.
It made an even number.
Thank you, but we'll fix the library and everything else will stay uneven. That's the way the language.
Library is even, I mean, to have these numbers like that, I just think is asking for, for errors.
We've had a lot of errors, but I don't think that it's from cents. I'm missing 10,000 dollars.
We just obtained the city budget, it's rounding out, you know, 10,000 dollars rounding out, also a million.
The error was that we signed, we signed. We signed 129,000 dollar borrowing note, now having a truck, that's the errors.
And you mix it all up like that.
You don't worry about cents, we got big.
You can be upset, alright, and you.
But that's rounding out, I'm telling you.
I haven't yet gotten it from the, I mean, from, uh.
Alright, what's the next one? Next one.
That's, that is it, that is a send it urgent, please. What?
We're changing the, uh, we're changing the language on Article 11.
Wait, just, just to clarify, are we changing Article 7 or not?
No.
On, okay, we're not changing Article 7, sorry Mickey.
Sorry Mickey.
I, I just tried.
In our defense, the library looks good.
Yeah, you did your job, it's the rest of the department. We're gonna hope Mickey live past that.
I am not gonna look to the end of that.
That's what I'm saying, we're hoping.
So I don't know what happens after that.
We can do a balloon paint next year.
And you're free. We need our actuarial table, alright, moving on.
Okay, Article, Article 8.
Article 8.
Yeah. So can summary, somebody just summarize where we are with regard to needing a new fire truck at a million dollars?
We need a.
The fire truck is 20 years old, the standard, in essence.
NFPA.
NFPA is, recommends that it be replaced at 20 years. Sean came in and talked to the select board, there is the option of rebuilding it, but your life expectancy is 10 years and it would take up to a year to get done, which poses a problem.
And it would cost about half a million dollars.
And it, it would be, uh, uh, it's the tanker truck, you know, so you, you know, you need, need to water for the fires. So, you know, the select board, he came in at the end of January and we told Sean in that meeting that yes, we will consider the fire truck so there would not be a 4% price increase. It takes 24 months to 28 months to get it from the time you order it. So, we're looking, the truck will be 23, 24 years old and it would be past its life expectancy.
Got it, thank you Frank, it might be very helpful. Might be very helpful to make that statement at the, uh, meeting as well.
I, I made, uh, there's an article in the Monterey News too about it this month.
Yes, that followed up with the article last month about how we budget, so it was a very nice segue, thank you.
So that we can take note of Jeff's writers by putting it in, um, in the, um, the note paragraph in the.
In the cover letter?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, okay, Article 15.
Can we change the language somewhere to put one time in there? I don't want to leave in Article 15, I understand it's only an annual budget, but I don't want to give any of this, like maybe you said the flexibility that you wanted for the Article 11 was, so however we pay it, I want less flexibility here. Keep the town vote appropriate to some of 30,000 or any of the sun from prepaid to pay for the one-time non-chemical control of the invasive. I don't want this to think, I, I understand it's only an annual budget, but I'm afraid that they want to baseline this and we're gonna be saddled with this 30,000 every year.
Well, that's next year, it's not me anymore.
I understand, I'm trying to manage my budget.
Eileen, we got the Lake Garfield tax district and that's our opportunity to ditch it and if it gets lowered down, it gets lowered down.
Okay, alright.
We are.
And then we are saddled.
Perfect answer, and then we are, I was just thinking of other ways to make clear, this was a, a temporary measure or a interim staff.
The thing is, I've been thinking about the Lake Garfield tax district, I still think you gotta put, we're putting on it in part because of, it's silly to have something pass town meeting and get hung up clarically.
I still don't understand how it got hung up.
Yeah, there were different versions of it. No one knew what voted, what version had been voted on or something. To me, I'm like 50/50 on if I want, I can see the pros and cons and then I say, well, you put it on there because it was hung up clarically after passing town.
Right.
All that being said, if it, if Lake Garfield tax district gets voted on and it goes through and everything gets, goes through properly, they take that expense on.
I, I agree.
If they don't, if we get voted on, then we gotta decide what we want to do, is it gonna be a line item, how are we gonna do it?
I agree, that's why.
We already reduced it from 50 to 30.
We did, last year it was 50, this year it's 30.
Oh, that's two years in a row?
No, it was 30, it was 30 and then up to 50 and then dropped to 30.
This is our third year.
Oh no, it's been going a lot longer.
Oh no, our third year, yeah, it's like seven.
Yeah.
Oh god.
It is yearly.
One year.
I don't understand why the beach monitor can't pull out the milk. Well, he's not doing anything.
One, this is the, uh, interesting, watching for dogs, so this is an interesting piece of, of history. So, this 30,000 dollars to pay for the milk oil, some years the select board supported it and the finance committee didn't. Or some years neither did it, it was just a petition.
Hey, Jeff and Lauren, do you want to support it or you don't, from the finance committee?
But, Eileen, I gotta tell you the history. One year it wasn't a petition, it said the select board does not support this article and finance committee does not support this article, but it was still on the warrant.
How did it get there?
I don't know.
My concern. To answer your question. My concern is that I don't think that we should have special articles that repeat every single year. I don't think, if that's the case, then there shouldn't be special articles, they should be line items in the budget. If they're, if we're covering routine costs, then that's, that should be a budget, in the budget, not a special item off to the side.
You want to not support this article?
If it's a one-time thing, that's different, what's that?
Right, it's already been decided that it's an article for the sixth year in a row. Do, as the finance committee, do you want to say yes, it should be here or no, we don't support this article?
I'm fine with it being there, I'm just talking to you about the process of what we put in the special, into the warrants and what we don't.
I think essentially if, if the. If the, um, article passes to make Lake Garfield tax district, at the point that tax district is functional, it will come off our warrant because.
It'll go away, right.
But if it doesn't. So I'm, I'm. Significantly consider making this a line item or at least.
Agree.
Could do, about the maintenance of Lake will have to be a line item, whether it's this way or another way. We're gonna have to own up to the fact that it needs yearly maintenance every year, it's not going away, that problem.
Right, so I'm ready to move on if everybody else is.
Eileen, you support it?
I don't.
Okay.
Alright, one, one. I don't. Sick of the milk.
Does anyone else not support it?
I'm not bowing to the pressure people.
Does that mean you're sick of the milk, what, or you're sick of paying for the milk?
I'm sick of paying for the milk.
Well, you buy wood circles in the Lake Garfield tax district, so you can run, but you can't hide.
I talked to a real estate broker today, don't you worry about that, you gotta find me a place to live now.
Alright.
So then are we gonna show that the, uh, finance committee is split on that and that there's not a majority vote?
Yeah.
Everybody's getting out of me.
Article, that's, that's it for the holds, for the purposes of, of the joint budget meeting, I have something for the select board.
So does that end the finance committee meeting?
Alright, do you want to talk about timeline?
Yeah, exactly.
Should we post an agenda for the finance committee?
I don't know, how do we do that, some people said I should have a form, some people said I just email Chris, so how do you want me to do that?
I'm just joking.
No, more importantly, you should know that April 25th, we have secured the library for the finance committee briefing.
What time?
6:30. I will take care of snacks, maybe Lauren will help Jeff, the family there. So, finance committee, 6:30, April 25th, so the warrant, everything should be done, and what do we want to do, do we want to meet again, I mean, we still have some things.
Well, you know what, let's plan, um, if it works for you all, 5:30 on Tuesday the 16th. That way we can, we can hopefully deal with any last minute changes.
Just make it an automatic joint meeting at 5:30?
Joint.
Can you post that, do I?
We'll post it, we'll post it, yeah.
If you send it, send it to clerk also, because technically he's responsible.
Technically, if you fill out the form, it goes to both.
Where's the form?
It's on, you'll be sent to the link board.
Include the policy, you fill out the form.
It's on the website.
But that's not what Chris said to me in your office, he said just send me.
Well, he may not realize that the form emails Roger and Chris. So you might say, email me, but if you just do the form.
I don't mind the form.
Do the form.
That'll be a form.
So you're saying Tuesday the 16th, what time is the meeting gonna be?
I would propose at 5:30 we'll have the joint.
Okay.
That may not last very long, we're, we're mostly figured out, except where we're really not figured out.
Which will not be resolved anyway. Wait, I need a little counseling, should I change my vote of milk oil to show unified fund for everything?
No.
Be honest, I got milfoil, this is, I don't wanna. I, you know what?
Actually, you know, I'm gonna.
The actual milfoil.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna change and, and go no on the audit. Cause I, I've been a post.
Look at this, I.
On the 16th.
I expired change, I love it. Mickey, write that one to the board.
Thank you, I just want. I just wanna get a word in here on the 6th for scheduling before we wrap up. On the 16th, I can't join you until 6:30.
Okay, then we'll do a joint at 6:30.
Okay.
Okay.
If we need it, otherwise we'll just go at 6. Yeah, if we can go at 6:30, the other thing I realized today at 6, I was like, wow, that's very nice to have an hour.
Not.
To chill out for a minute.
Thank God today.
It was like back to back meetings.
You had a lot of meetings.
It's 5:30, it's like.
No, 6 was always time, we, we do some 5:30s. I haven't always had the same.
Oh, you mean an hour after job?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just depends on the situation.
Well, on behalf of the finance committee, we adjourn, but before we adjourn, we just wanna say it's truly a pleasure to work. And I.
It is, and it's, it's also a pleasure to see how seriously, in spite of our good humor, how seriously and diligently, everybody works to make this happen. It's a huge task and I, I'm, on behalf of the public, even though I'm speaking as a finance committee member, I'm also a citizen, it's amazing to see the care. That is spent on putting this together and representing the town's interests, so thank you for all that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, S.B. and Mickey, who was the other person?
I'm sweating for myself or anybody else.
Thank you very much.
The burden of the world in a moment. Okay, okay, I think that we're, oh, let me go over my one change.
Okay.
So, this was just.
This Article 18?
Yeah, Article 18, Section 7. I, um, that lawyer for Lake Garfield working group. Um, did a draft and I compared what's on our warrant versus what she provided and it's really close, which was surprising, which was good.
That's good, that's good.
Uh, the only change is as listed below and we don't have to make it. By the way, also Donna looked at her changes and signed off and said they're okay, but Donna also looked at ours, so. We don't have to do this, the main difference is wording and the amount of people that it takes to, to call a special meeting.
Right. 50 proprietors?
50 versus 20 or 20%. Let's shoot from the hip, the total number of proprietors is gonna be around 200, 250, very roughly, within a few hundred, so.
And you were worried about rounding off, yeah.
No.
Yeah, I was talking money though.
Well, this could be money.
No, no, but it matters.
You're not on the list.
Because what's 20%, 20% of 200 is four.
Yes.
So, if, if we do 20 proprietors or 20%, 20 is gonna be the lower number. If we do 50 versus 20%, 20% is gonna be the lower number.
Right.
So let's do 50.
Okay.
I think we stick with our 50.
The question is, are we trying to make it easy or hard to do?
Hard.
Okay.
Just call a special district meeting, that's fine, cause if you think about calling a special town meeting.
I hear ya.
It's, what is it, 200 or 20%? So in Monterey, let's assume 700 plus or minus, 20% of 700 is 140.
So 200 is higher. Okay.
But it's low, whichever is lower, so it'd be 140, would call a special town meeting, 140 is a lot of verified signature.
You'd have to collect like 200 to get it.
So let's do the fifth, let's stick with our 50 that we did and not her 20.
Okay, and knock out 20%.
So you want 50, you want 50 or 20?
No, no, it's one or they're, they're both in, it's just that it was 20 or 20% and now we're making 50 or 20%. So as it is here.
So just 20% would be lower, I, and the other case, I think almost certainly the 20 would be lower, that's why I ballpark how many proprietors, cause. It's worth it, even if you don't know the exact number.
So are we doing, and we're doing of the district instead of within the district, right, it's just like.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think because, well, I think of the district because within, within sort of means it's got some delineation, but there's some really weird delineations.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair.
Let's just do, uh, yeah.
Okay, that's fine, I'm, I'm good with the changes.
Okay. Um, minutes.
I don't blame you, run away. I don't blame you.
So Susan drafted this out, I made some changes, but Franklin, not to the interviewing part, the after the interviewing part. The main changes that I made. About how long people could speak. For more than two minutes.
What did I write?
Further.
Okay.
Um, and Justin asked each board member, do I have any?
Go ahead Mickey.
Top three, three things they liked by each candidate. Could offer, I mean, it's pretty much minor wording changes.
By this time I was getting pretty tired, so it's good that you were checking for errors.
Yeah. And then, the only interesting thing that I did was. Substantive, you, I think you had a really good motion of how we entered executive session, all I did was copy the one that we had in the approved executive session minutes. So that it all lines up, it, I think you had a really good one.
I, that's fine.
I just wanted it to.
I think I took it for granted from what you said, but I'm wholly fine with your changing it.
Yeah.
I, or I should say I attempted to, because that involves a lot of rewinding.
Yeah.
Cause I, I do type pretty fast, but.
No, I, 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 I only did it for the consistency between you two.
That's fine, I have no problem with it. Yeah, and I have no problem with it at all, that's fine.
All right.
Did you check the documents because I'm?
No, I think those are good.
Okay.
Um, cause it, application materials, application materials, select board questions, Donna's letter, I mean. There might be something else that's one of those gray areas where we mentioned it, but if, the ones that have to be included, if it's, if it's physically present and you discuss it. Then you have to include it, if it's physically present, but you don't discuss it, you could include it, if you discuss it, but it's not physically present, you don't have. So the ones you have to have to include, I think that covers it.
Okay.
Um, I would move to approve the March 7 minutes as amended. Did you have another discussion?
No.
We'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you for not being upset that there were so many.
No, it's all good.
I just couldn't. It's bad when it's easier to do it longer, what's that even?
Well, that's, we have sometimes weird meetings and that was, you know what I mean, in terms of the format.
And also sometimes there's something that's related particularly politically important and you need to cover, like you can't just say a discussion ensued.
Yeah. Um, 312, now Roger asked me a question, why do we include members of the public who attend the meeting? We don't have to, and I wonder if.
I don't even think it's legal, legally you should.
Why is that?
Because someone could come here and you're basically. It's like freedom of speech sort of stuff, we had this situation in the past where people were like requiring people to sign in to come to meetings.
Yeah.
And so someone could come in here and not give you their name, they might not wanna, they might not let people know that they're here.
Yeah.
So they're just like sitting in the corner, they could give, they could give a false name.
I agree about not having to identify yourself, except, let me just make sure this here, no one's entitled to speak.
Right.
So if they wanna speak, I believe, by assumption, we can require them to identify themselves.
And that's what I, that's where I agree where this should be in here, so, so for example, if in, uh, like, uh, the, the, the March 12th one, if. Nancy, for example, who was on the screen, if she hadn't spoken, she shouldn't be here, but if she speaks, she asks a question.
Yeah.
And we're acknowledging, because you, that would, that would be something that's in the minutes though, right, you would say that Nancy Cleveland has spoken.
Yeah, but I also don't think it's illegal.
It might not be illegal.
Yeah, if we said you can't come to the meeting unless you sign in, it's different from saying, we know who Mickey is and we're gonna say on minutes that Mickey was here.
True.
So, it may not be illegal, but we also just don't need to do it, with the online one, anyone can watch it on YouTube afterward.
Yeah.
But if they contribute, we can certainly ask for the.
Yeah, I think, I think if we, I, I would think. Procedurally, if they asked a question and you wanted to put them in the, um, in the minutes, you could ask them for their names, if they said I want to be anonymous, you didn't just say be anonymous, but.
Yeah.
You pretty much know everybody in town.
Another, sometimes someone walks in again and.
I didn't, I did not get to these today, I was, I was.
No wording.
Starting through the fire department stuff, so.
No words, you wanted, you wanna hint, you wanted to save your future meeting?
Yeah, can I? Yeah. Do you mind?
Sorry.
I'm fine.
I'm not, no point for me.
Yeah.
And now you have my edits too, so, all that craziness.
Um, I'll try and, when I print them out, I'll try and be better putting, that's why you put your email at the bottom.
Yeah.
Oh, is that why that there, okay.
It gets so confusing, cause it's like it's coming fast and furious and.
Well, yeah, it does. Well, this is.
It's a hassle.
Normal, it's a transition period, usually what happens is I send them in 10 minutes.
Something worse.
What, so, do we have any other homework that were, we have no more meetings this week, no, you and I have a meeting.
Two o'clock Thursday.
Two o'clock Thursday.
Yeah, I said put it on, it's posted.
Right, posted.
Put the word.
Is it posted?
Yeah.
So, here's a problem, and I actually meant to write out a policy. You, it didn't get posted in such a way that it sent out a black email blast.
Yeah, that's why I'm trying to figure out is how, that, how that works, cause I, I have to call them, I can't quite figure out how to get it to connect to an email blast.
Well, how do you do it?
I went to the select board, uh, page, I, um, went to add content and then put in an added, is it an event?
Yes, so is, did you go to add event?
Is there an alert? Yeah, is there an alert there, is there an alert option?
No, it will automatically do it.
Where is this posted, it's not on the select board page.
You can't, if you don't, if you don't have admin login, you can't see it.
No, no, not gonna add, it's not on the agenda.
No, it's, it's on the calendar.
It's on the calendar, but it's not on the select board page.
Well, it's on the 11th, right there.
It's on the calendar but not under agendas.
Oh, under agendas.
Nine, eight, two, yeah.
Oh, yeah, if you're a high admin.
So I was gonna make a policy, or, or a procedure rather, Roger, for you and Chris, because I've. Because there's like 85 different ways to do it.
Yeah.
But there's one way that kind of does everything and the, the steps that we have that are laid out aren't really clear, so I can do it clearly. What, the way that it needs to be done, to do the email blast and to show up and all the places you wanna show up is, you first go in and you hit create event.
Yeah.
You put it all in, and then you do create agenda, you link relevant event.
Yeah.
There's other ways to do it and once in a while, even during the past two years, we would come across things like, oh, it wasn't posted. And then I remember like wanting to cancel a meeting, it was like, well, it was posted here but not here, so, let me. I can, cause I wanted to get something written up because whoever is doing it, it's gotta be the same, and one thing I know is like planning board does their own, and they often end up with a double posting or something like that, so to get you, planning board, Chris. I should probably, and I meant to do this a few days ago, to get to, just say boom, 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 this is how it's done to keep everything consistent.
Yeah, I, I have to, I've been trying to call their, uh, their support, their support used to be really good, cause they were a small company.
Yeah.
Would call them up and IT would just, their support would pick up right there, now it's a little more complicated, cause they got so many, they bought so many companies over the past 10 years.
Yeah.
And we're kind of a weird version too, it's a little different.
Plus they probably fired half their support staff.
Yeah, so I, I tried to, I've tried to call them and I've sat on hold.
Yeah.
Because I, they used to have really good training videos, so, but I need to find out what version.
Well, and, and the other thing is too is I don't know, let's just for now, I don't mind you targeting to and getting in relationship, but for now, I can just break down the steps to do it, delete the Monterey way.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then, you can have that, Chris can have it, that way, no matter who's posting, it's consistent.
And maybe that's why it didn't work to get the today's OSRP meeting on the OSRP page either, I wonder if the same thing was the limitation.
Well, the.
Do I do that?
I think Marty did the agenda for them.
I don't know, Marty did it? Not posted the agenda or did the agenda?
She sent, I think she sent it to you.
The agenda did get posted, but it only got posted on the calendar, it did get posted on.
Yeah, that's why we prefer this meeting, right?
So, this is what I've been, this is why I meant to write this out, cause I noticed this, this is a good reminder for me. We just need to get everyone doing it consistently, that's all, because like I said, and there's other ways to do it that it gets done, but I'll write down the way to do it so that everyone's doing it the same way, that's all. Other housekeeping, uh, we got, I think 312 is our last set of March minutes to do and then we'll end it April, which is good. I don't know about any other.
What do we have, so we have a meet.
We have a meeting next week, I'll send out the draft agenda.
So Roger did yesterday's, he's gonna do the minutes from yesterday's meeting and he's doing today's. And then we're gonna hire someone, so.
On the 23rd, which is two Tuesdays from now on, I won't be here.
Okay.
There, um, somebody invited us to a, um, 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 castle.
Okay.
Yeah, great.
Um, sometimes coming up on town meeting, we don't actually meet because we've signed a warrant.
Yeah.
And.
Unless there's pressing business.
There's pressing business or you wanna, we can go over what we need for town meeting, um, so that would be the 23rd.
Before you do, you have the 30th before the town meeting.
Yeah, yeah, so, we might not meet at all or I might meet without you.
I just wanna make sure.
So you're gonna try, you're gonna draft a letter that we're gonna put in with the warrant?
Yeah.
Do you wanna draft the whole thing?
I might have Roger do it, I might have Roger do it, which is.
With.
A letter that goes as a cover letter for the warrant that has things like an explanation of the fire truck.
Yep.
Um, an explanation, you know, I'm happy to write some warning for why the November. Special town meeting's on there, Frank, I mean, just to.
No, you mean it's wording?
No, why, why we put it on there?
Oh, oh, that thing.
Yeah, the regularized special town meeting, November. Yeah, I mean, I'll just like, it doesn't have to be two, maybe, I was thinking of like four and five.
Well, can you do, can you do the November and maybe between you could split up like fire comp and, and things that I can't do, and I can deal with county clerk, office assistant. And other notable items, I, I was gonna do that again today and then.
Why does clerk even need to be in them?
People might ask, why is it up?
Oh.
And I was just gonna say we upped the hours.
Great.
Because of.
That's easy, yeah.
Yeah, and, and office assistant, people might ask, what's going on, I'm just gonna say we combined select board secretary and we upped the wage, we can actually hire someone.
So we can actually hire someone, so that would be.
So, I, I mean, there's also a question like, what's too much, we're not gonna go line by line and say this is why, but I feel like the ones that you know you're just gonna get a hold on.
Right.
And discuss, and you're still gonna get a hold on it, someone's not gonna read the cover letter.
Of course.
But.
But at least everyone else can glare at them and say like, why didn't you read the cover letter? Read the cover letter next time.
So.
Well, that was an obvious and a sore one for me.
Yeah. Well, that trying to change this was also confusing beyond all of that, so.
It was.
Um.
Were, were there anything, other big things that we, do we need to write something about the debt, why the debt is split?
Uh, yeah, I'll do that, cause I have the whole debt formula.
Um, I'm just trying to make sure we have all the topics that we wanted mentioned in there.
Do you wanna go IT work?
Yeah, but like, hopefully, I can do some. Hopefully like a couple sentences, so. And then I think, let's do it like this, Roger will be in charge and I'll send in a number of things and Susan will send a number of things and Frank, if, if they, if.
Will they send it to you and you'll like work it together?
So that it's not only, only because it's me off.
Yeah, and then, and then we'll have a letter and we'll can sit and edit the crap out of it and then it'll be up.
Sounds good.
All right, motion to adjourn, second, we'll vote on the motion to adjourn.
Yahoo.
Yes, so that's unanimous vote in favor of adjourning at 8:32 PM.